This time I'll call to order the York County Council Public Agenda Meeting. I will read this out. First of all, I'll say welcome to everyone. We appreciate you being here tonight. It's always good to see such a good, healthy crowd of folks from the community coming out to help speak and give us your opinions. So our item is Council to Hold a Public Hearing on an Ordnance to Establish the Operating and Capital Budgets for the Operation of the County Government of York County for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1st, 2025; to Provide for the Levy of Taxes for York County for Fiscal Year Commencing July 1st, 2025; to Provide for the Expenditure of Tax Revenues and Other County Funds; to Establish a Consolidated Fee Schedule for All Existing County Fees Relative to the Operation of County Government, Its Boards, Agencies, and Departments; and to Provide for Other Matters Related There Too. We do have a big budget tonight, and we are here to listen to the public and hear what information you have to share with us. If you'd like to speak, what I would ask that you do is to come forward. Please give your name and address, and then proceed with your comments. Typically, council doesn't engage in a back-and-forth. We simply take the comments that you have and consider them as we... Our next reading of the budget will be Monday, so we will not be taking action here tonight on second reading. This is to hear from the public. If you would kindly keep your comments related to something that's related to the budget items. Council may have questions of staff that arise during the public hearing process, and we can follow through with those questions then or later at the meeting on Monday. If you are here with a group, what I try to do is to refrain from having the same thing repeated several times. So if you're here with a group that's saying the same thing, please just let us know that. Say that you're here. Ask them to stand and say who are the folks that are here in support of what I'm saying. That helps make sure that we understand how many folks are here for that, and we don't need to have it said 10 times. And I would ask that you also, so that we can keep decorum, if we can refrain from applause. It takes some guts to get up and speak before council, and so what we don't want to do is to have any chilling effect, whether it's applause or boos. We don't want either one. You can show support by having folks stand up, and we would ask that you follow that. So with that said, we will open up public hearing if anyone would like to speak before council.
My name is Jim Bradford. I live at 12 Wright Avenue, and I'm here to speak on the 1.5 mils that are in the proposed budget to support county recreation facilities. And also, I'm here to speak on the fact that the budget does not include the historic 1.5 mils of taxation for non-residents of cities to be allowed to come and participate in municipal facilities at no charge above that which city residents are paying. I really think that the arrangement with the 1.5 mils for recreation that is imposed upon non-residents of cities and then allocated to municipalities is one heck of a deal, both for the county in terms of getting recreation needs met, but it's good for the residents of the county because they don't have a lot of paperwork. I know you've got some plans that are being discussed about vouchers and this, that, and the other, but just the simplicity of the present system is part of its beauty. Now, and it means that residents from unincorporated areas can participate in so many programs: football, baseball, basketball, tennis, softball, soccer, pickleball, et cetera, swimming. And I'm here in York. We don't have any tennis courts in York. I go to Rock Hill. I'm treated just like I'm a resident of Rock Hill. That's the kind of thing that I think is really good about the current system. Why also is it a good deal? Because frankly, 1.5% is not really enough, not the county's fair share, for meeting those recreation needs. And what else is the county not doing? It's not paying a dime to build the facilities that these people are using. So what I'd like to do is suggest this. Please, I have no problem with imposing 1.5 mils of taxation for recreation on me in York, the whole county. I mean, I use county facilities. I mean, I use the Field Day Park. I'm going to use the new Riverbend Park. Yes, I should be taxed for that. No problem with that. But so should everybody else in the county. The 1.5 mils is, I think, a simple, "Let's get it done" to keep things moving in a good direction right now. This budget pressure, we can't work out a grand compromise or a long-term plan in the time that's allowed. I would suggest that after this budget cycle, that you get together, all the municipal folks and the county folks, and let's come up with a realistic, fair plan for everybody, and then, you know, that can be, you know, agenda for the next year, after this fiscal year is taken care of. I think that's it. I appreciate the job that you do. You give thoughtful consideration to the county's business, and I know you'll give thoughtful consideration to this matter. I know it's already there's been amendment to do what I've suggested, which failed, but I hope you'll find a way to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keep coming.
Sure. I'm Rick Lee, 623 Meadowbrook Lane in Rock Hill. I also am here to talk about the proposed changes to the funding of recreation in York County. I'd like to highlight that I was on county council for four terms and was part of the group that put together the deal, so to speak, that for 17 years operated very effectively. We divided up the money based on the number of children in a school district that were in the areas that were defined by the agreement. It worked well. There were some changes later on that we modified it somewhat to increase some funding that went to the more rural areas of the county, but it was very successful. It lasted nearly 20 years. And I would like to point out that during the time, and y'all weren't here at that time, but during the time when this was under discussion, a lot of county residents were in favor of setting up a program like this wherein the county residents were able to participate in the very fine recreational facilities and programs of the municipalities without paying a fee that was significantly more than the city residents paid. And it worked well. From my perspective, as a former councilman, I thought that the deal we struck at that time was the best deal that the county may have ever gotten because it costs $10 million, I think the number is now, for Rock Hill's recreation program. And there are other costs for other recreation programs throughout the county. And more than half of the people who use the facilities are county residents. So in reality, if you did it proportionally, instead of paying a million and a half a year, which is what I think the stipend was, you should be paying 5 million or 6 million if you're going to pay for the actual costs incurred for county residents. So the deal that you have is a good deal financially for the county. The other question I had was with regards to the one and a half mils that you're proposing as a new tax. How much of that money will go into the cities? Or is this a tax that will exclude all of the city residents from York and Fort Mill and Rock Hill and so on and so forth from receiving the financial benefit in their area, which, you know, people go to the park that's nearest to their house? And I ask whether or not that is a fair distribution of the funds. I've heard some discussion about a fee paid for young people who participate in programs that the cities operate. I'm not sure how much it is and so on and so forth, but you can only imagine the record-keeping and issues that will be developed by doing just exactly that. How do you verify a young person's address well if he says, "I'm living with grandmother," and she lives inside the city? I mean, it just sets everybody up for a lot of conflict, which I don't think is really necessary. If you were in the position that the municipalities are in right now, and they chose to do a similar action, I know how I, as a county councilman, would feel if their fees all went up two or three times. And the county residents who would then have to pay those fees are going to look to their county councilman and say, "This just doesn't work." They will become the biggest advocates for bringing this back to where we are essentially today. I do want to urge you to reconsider your vote on it, to give it more thought, and understand the logistics of what you're proposing and the potential fallout that might occur as the municipalities react to a loss of funds and perhaps a loss of face in some respects. So more than that, I guess that's about it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Forrest Stone. I'm at 455 12 Oaks Lane in Fort Mill. I'm here also to speak about the redistribution of the recreation tax. Youth sports provide our children with more than just hours away from screens and something to do on weekends. They build community, foster friendships across disparate neighborhoods and rival schools, teach life skills and lessons like toughness and teamwork, provide positive adult interactions, build confidence and grit. This bill threatens to take away and potentially make it financially unfeasible for the 59.5% of sports registrations that currently reside in unincorporated York County. Now, at first glance, I'm sure some people see this bill and think, "Oh, I'll pay less in taxes," and I think it's great to spread it around all county residents. But that would not be the end result of this legislation. This bill, even with the $75 per child stipend, will leave our rec departments at a significant budget shortfall going forward. Some estimates peg it around 50% of current operating budgets, depending on the rec department. This shortfall would force tough decisions within those rec departments. Do we restrict access to only incorporated residents? Do we increase or double the fees for unincorporated residents? As we have no countywide rec options, I ask the council, if they restrict access, where do those kids go next? Do they go to Pineville? Do they go to Steel Creek? If they double the fees, do you think it's reasonable for a single child who plays sports in all three seasons, fall, winter, actively trying to take away those community-building opportunities sports create? Here's a personal example of how sports help outside the field of play. My son will be transitioning to middle school next year, and he's one of the few elementary schools that divides between two middle schools. Most of his friends will be going to the school he is in zone for. You know what helped with that transition? At welcome night, he saw kids from three other elementary schools that he knew from youth sports, from Orchard Park, from Pleasant Knoll, kids that I coached and that he played with or played against. That's important. Those ties that bind communities matter. Now, I also very much get the benefit and the desire to improve access and maintenance to our passive parks across York County. Maintaining green spaces and access to them for family recreation is extremely important. My question is, why can't we do both? Why can't we maintain our traditional funding for rec sports and fund our park system? Simply adding the passive park tax for all York County residents while removing the subsidy for sports would allow that household impact to be negligible. As an unincorporated resident, maintaining the current recreation tax would be far more beneficial to my pocketbook than a simple increase in a single youth registration fee. Right? We can do both. You do not have to hurt our kids to fund our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to switch it up. My name is Catherine White. I live at 508 Buttercup Way, Fort Mill, and I'm also the Chair of the York Soil and Water Conservation District. First, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to each of you for your continued dedication to our community and for the unwavering support you've shown over the years. Your commitment to making York County a better place is deeply appreciated and does not go unnoticed. For the past 13 years, the York Soil and Water Conservation District has received an annual county allocation of $12,675. This funding has enabled us to make meaningful progress in conserving our natural resources and serving our residents. We've done a lot with a little, but the needs of our growing community continue to evolve, and so must our response. As we look to the future, I believe even stronger collaboration between county government and community-based organizations like our own will be essential. The challenges we face, whether environmental, educational, or developmental, require shared commitment and innovative partnerships. Together, we can stretch every dollar further, but imagine what we could do with just a moderate increase in investment. That's why I'm respectfully requesting an increase in our annual allocation to $15,000. With this additional funding, we can expand our environmental education and outreach programs, reaching more residents, especially the youth, with the knowledge and tools they need to become responsible stewards of our natural resources. Plan strategically for long-term growth and sustainability, ensuring we are prepared to address emerging environmental concerns. Continue and enhance our technical assistance to landowners and residents, empowering them to manage and protect natural resources effectively. These investments not only benefit our environment, they strengthen our community's future, public health, and economic resilience. In partnership with our state and federal allies, we remain committed to providing York County residents with high-quality conservation education and technical support, but we need your help to continue growing that impact. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to working alongside you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Laura Booth. I live at 109 West Somersby, Fort Mill. I'm speaking tonight to ask the county council to include money for a needs assessment for our library system. We have five libraries in York County. We have not added any libraries in years, and our population has grown and grown and grown, as you very well know. I've attended several library board meetings, and the majority of the board members have made it clear that they don't value community feedback, and they are not champions for the York County library system. I would be surprised if every one of them have even checked out a book. We have members of the York County Library Board that don't understand the whole system. They are not champions for our library system. I'm here today on behalf of my neighbors and to acknowledge that you need data to determine what our community needs, what our county needs in terms of libraries. I'm here on behalf of over 500 people to appeal to you to prioritize a library needs assessment, which is a drop in the water for your overall budget. The proposed library needs assessment from three or four years ago was about $33,000. Again, that's a drop in the bucket for the overall county. As mentioned, over 500 county residents signed a petition to ask the York County Library Board to conduct a formal community assessment. In-house data collected by library staff is not sufficient. York County is now the third wealthiest county in the state of South Carolina, and we should be able to support the small amount needed to conduct a needs assessment. Libraries are an excellent investment for our community. That's because research repeatedly shows that the return on investment for your local library is around $5, but could be up to $9 for every dollar spent on them. A well-funded library raises surrounding property values, helps develop an intelligent workforce, and makes local social services more important. Proximity to a public library means greater revenue for retailers. Patrons who stop out of the library while completing a longer list of errands report halo spending. Go to the library, you pick up your dry cleaning, you pick up a meal, you buy a treat for your child. There are long-term financial rewards of supporting our nation's education, I'm sorry, our county education system through targeted early literary initiatives. After parents and grandparents, libraries are the first places where children establish lifelong reading habits. Kids learn to read at the library. Moreover, new parents learn how to teach their children to read by attending age-appropriate storytime and observing the librarian. Libraries are investments that communities across our country choose to make. They know because it builds community. It builds community across people of all ideologies, all religions. Libraries give back to the community through education and information access, entertainment, community building, meeting spaces, access to technology and internet connectivity, an endless number of stories, and more. So again, I'm here today on behalf of over 500 people that have signed a petition asking the council to fund a needs assessment of approximately $35,000 to determine the potential direction of our library system in York County for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, friends. I am Gwen Savage, and I live at 109 Spring Branch Lane in Fort Mill. I am here as a resident of Fort Mill. I'd like to thank you for the hard work, and I wouldn't dare to second-guess what information you have gathered to make decisions in regards to the parks and rec. I have spoken with Kristy. I've spoken with Debbie. I've spoken with Tom, the representatives for the north side of the river. I am, this is my third time, actually, before the county council in regards to the same process. The process just doesn't seem to serve everybody's desire for that need. We have struggled over this. I've been in city government for 21 years. I have been a resident of Fort Mill for 69 years. I have coached Little League. I have played in Little League. My son coaches in Little League, and we've enjoyed the benefit of having robust programs, that we are open just as you are bringing people to our region with open arms. We do too. We've had the highest growth rate in the nation at one point in time. So we have a lot of new people. We don't want to turn anyone away from our programs. We definitely want to provide those programs the way that they are. But the money that has been provided to date supplemented the money that was given by the taxpayers in Fort Mill. Our municipal tax funds and impact fees that we charge go into the purchase of land, the construction of facilities, the maintenance of facilities, the utilities required, not just the operation of a rec program. In discussions I've had with you, I think it has become apparent to me that recreation programs are different than park systems. Park systems, being somewhat passive at times, do not require the same level of attention that the constant rotational programs do. We needed those funds to be able to provide those programs for county residents at no additional fee. Fort Mill does charge additional fees for people outside in Lancaster County and Indianland. They're very close to us. We charge an additional fee to them because they're not giving us funding on a county level to sustain those programs. So the 1.5 taxation seems to be doubling down, if you will. These other folks have spoken very pleasantly and very politely and very professionally. I think to get through this issue for yet again another session and budget, we have to really get to the issue at the base of the problem. And the issue is, we have been funding those programs. We never expect our parks and rec programs to break even. They are not a revenue stream, nor could ever be. We do not spend county money on things we haven't already spent town money on. So I am a resident of York County. I'm a respecter of the process. I am in city government in Fort Mill. I really enjoy what we see in our rec programs. I understand your thinking for giving a stipend, but they are two separate functionalities. We only have one county park north of the river, and that's Nivens Creek Landing, one. All other parks from the middle of Fort Mill and Elijah Park are 25 to 35 minutes from downtown Fort Mill. My 90-year-old mother lives in town. She will pay those taxes that are being assessed because she lives in town, but she won't visit any of those parks. But she's okay paying it if it means that our children get to stay away from the screens, stay away from sitting, and be active and healthy in our community. So I ask of you to please reconsider the direction that you may or may not be taking. I don't know full and well. I have not been presented exactly what your plans are, but I think it's important that we support you in doing what you do. I want to be supportive in doing what I do. But I think it's important when we're doing this together that we work on it together. So I am on your side. I want to see this resolved finally, completely. I don't want to come back a fourth time. I like you guys, but not that much. We need to not have some of the rhetoric that I have heard. There are no slush funds. There is no cheating in Fort Mill. We use those monies fairly, and we use them to the benefit of everyone in those programs, be they a county unincorporated resident or inside-the-city resident. So I ask of you to please consider this program. As the person before me said, I think we've had a very good approach to making sure that everyone had accessibility to the programs that they and their children would like to enjoy. With that, thank you for your service. I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lamell, 936 Ashford Way in Fort Mill. I am appearing before you today as the Chair of the York County Disabilities Foundation. A few months ago, I had the pleasure of hosting some of y'all out at Miracle Park. I told you at the end of that time that I would be coming back to you with an ask, and that is what I am here for today. The Miracle Park has submitted a request under the York County Accommodation Tax Program, and I'm asking that the council make sure that that is approved as part of the budget for this year. By any standard, Miracle Park has been a tremendous success. With just one Miracle Field in our playground, we are averaging 12,000 visitors a month. We have had visitors from 41 states. We have had hundreds of individuals who participate as players for Miracle Games, and we have had hundreds of individuals who work as volunteers for that. We have had hundreds and thousands of individuals attend the park for a large variety of programs. 55% of the individuals who participate in those programs are from the county area. A larger percentage of those who simply come to the park to enjoy the facilities are from the county area. And it has been a massive bringer of individuals with just the one field into Rock Hill, into York County, to participate. We have generated up somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,500 hotel room stays and millions of dollars of revenue coming into the various businesses from people who are visiting. With the next phase of Miracle Park, where we are adding in another Miracle Field and a general-purpose field, we will then be able to attract even larger activities with Special Olympics, with Miracle Championships, that will continue to grow the impact that Miracle Field has had, that Miracle Park has had, on this community. And so from that stretch, it has been a tremendous success. But it's also been a tremendous success as the epitome of a public-private cooperation. In terms of private donations, millions and millions of dollars have been raised to go towards the construction and the continued growth of Miracle Park. We've also had millions of dollars contributed from various public entities, the state, universities, municipal governments. But the one thing that we haven't had yet is any contribution from the York County side of things. And so I'm here today asking that the county look at this particular request for the accommodation tax. tax and make sure that it is part of the budget. It is time for York County to get on board and support what is one of the best activities currently going in York County that contributes to integrating a much-neglected community into our society. And I urge that any of you who wish to come visit and see the joy that exists at Miracle Park, reach out to me, reach out to a member who's already been there, and come see what we're asking you to contribute to, and you won't have any doubt about how valid it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, everybody. Scott Cokernower, 122 West Oak Street, in the beautiful White Bull Park neighborhood in downtown Fort Mill. Bump and I should be at a football showcase right now, it was in Rock Hill, got moved to Fort Mill yesterday, and that facility was supported by the town, the school district, and by York County when they funded the turf fields there. So that is a great thing that happened, and it shows we can all come together and do stuff together. Now, see, my friend, Mr. Miller here, we ran lacrosse tournaments together with our kids, his daughter, my sons, and we were bringing in 120 teams, that's 4,000 people, for a weekend, Father's Day weekend, so you're not even calculating that type of money. And then we also ran a little one in the fall with only 60 teams. So, so everything you're looking at for Parks and Rec, you hadn't even calculated that type of procedure into it. So, if you take the whole 400 million-dollar budget as a dollar, you're talking about one quarter of one penny is what we're all talking about here. So that's how small this number is that we're spending hours and hours on. So, everything you heard back there, I can agree with. I'd tell you, the rec departments for the municipalities, times it, times three, times it, times four. Let's do it correctly, if we're, you know, if we're along that line. Another thing I have is, there is a opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in Fort Mill that's similar to the River Bend Preserve. If we do not take this opportunity during this budget cycle, this property will go away. This would be a library site, and this would, we can fund it just like we did River Bend Preserve. I promise you, if we do not do that at this budget cycle, fund this library in downtown Fort Mill, that property will be gone. I am fine with our attorneys and how they handle outside council. I think we should know how much money we're spending in District 7 and all throughout the county. I want to know what our budget is for Seale Fab attorneys for the tower at Regent Park, and I sure would love to know what we spent on the Panthers over there. So, along that line. All right, so, once every five years, we get the opportunity for reassessment. I came up with a number of about $5 to $10 million, talked to my friend, Mr. Madden, which I trust 100%, and he spit out an $8 million number, so we were all right there together. So instead of raising millage with the reassessment we got coming at us, we got $8 million of extra money. Mr. Madden had the multiplier, and I, so he was not going to take that $8 million and hide it, he was going to appropriate, or unappropriate, or use it less, so he had the multiplier. Roll it back. So, anyway, my philosophy is, let's don't raise the millage, because we got $8 million coming at us from reassessment. So you have the opportunity to do great things with that money, sit here and let your, let everybody know that you represent, that we have, we have kept funding the, our recs departments. We've added a library and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity like we had for River Bend Preserve. So, this is a great opportunity, only comes around once every five years, and you can blame it all on our assessor's office. So, thank you for your time and everything you do for us.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of County Council. My name is Charlie Funnerberg, I live in the city of Tiki K. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and would like to address both the recent budget process, specifically the recreation funding, and several comments made during the budget conversation at your first reading on May 5th. I want to begin with where my frustration and the frustration of the Municipal Recreation Association of York County stems from. I would ask that everyone that is here tonight, specifically that is part of the Municipal Recreation Association, please stand, so County Council knows where we're at. And this is, it's with regard to the proposed elimination of Recreation Tax District and the distribution of its funds. It's been said that county management has had multiple meetings and conversations with all of the city and town managers in York County, and that just simply isn't accurate, at least not with me and several of the other managers that I've spoken with. On March 10th, the Municipal Recreation Association of York County held a meeting that included county management, where we discussed working collaboratively as many times as necessary to resolve the recreation funding issue. We acknowledged the county's need to fund the new Parks Department. However, on March 27th, the Help Subcommittee met and was presented with four options by county management, none of which have been previously discussed with the municipalities. That same night, that option four passed with a two-to-one vote and was later adopted by you all in a five-to-two vote on May 5th. There has been no collaboration. Why weren't other funding solutions explored or discussed? Perhaps they were, but county management has told me directly that appropriately $2.2 million is needed for fiscal year 2026 for the Parks Department. The county is already retaining about 23% of the Recreation Tax District funds, which equated this current year to roughly $404,000. One mill levied county-wide generates about $1.9 million. Retaining the 404 and levying just one additional mill county-wide would generate $2.3 million, enough to fund the new Parks Department while preserving the Recreation Tax District funding for the municipalities. This structure would result in unincorporated properties paying 2.5 mills, one and a half for the local recreation that they're already doing and have been doing, and one for the Parks Department. The incorporated residents would pay one additional mill toward county parks in addition to taxes they are already paying for municipal parks and facilities. It's a fair and balanced approach that seems to have not been considered. Therefore, for FY 2026, I propose maintaining the FY 2025 funding formula while municipal and county staff work together through the end of this calendar year to create a permanent, mutually-agreeable solution. Several of you have said multiple times that you're tired of discussing this annually. So are we. Now I'd like to respond to several comments from the May 5th meeting. You stated that the county has tried repeatedly to work something out and that the municipalities have pushed back on requests for participation data. Yet every time the county has requested data, it has been provided, despite the fact that the intergovernmental agreement, which I just gave copies of to the clerk, has been, that's been in place since 2006, does not require us to do so. Section 3 of the IGA obligates the county to allocate funds from the Recreation Tax District to municipalities. Section 4 obligates municipalities to provide recreational services without charging additional fees to unincorporated residents. It also requires us to provide facilities, staff, and supervision. Nowhere does the IGA require data submissions as a condition for receiving funds, but we've provided them anyway, year after year. You also claim this issue has become a money grab from municipalities. I agree that we previously did request an increase in funding due to the rising costs that we were all experiencing. In response, the county restructured the distribution formula and began keeping roughly $404,000 for itself, calling it Lake Wiley Share, even though Lake Wiley voted to tax itself for Field Day Park. The county now retains 23% of the $1.7 million collected while offering no programming and placed further restrictions on municipality as to how we could, how the remainder is used. Why is the county not fully utilizing the millage authority in Lake Wiley's special tax district? According to your FY 2026 budget, you're taxing nearly $400,000 more than the annual principal and interest payment for Field Day Park. That begs the question as to why you need, why you need any portion of the Recreation Tax District funds. Perhaps that surplus could be used to pay down the debt early and reduce long-term interest. Also, the approximate $960,000 budgeted simply as appropriation to seemingly operate Field Day Park, perhaps it goes to something else, it just isn't clear in the budget documents. It does seem excessive for a facility that consists of mostly artificial turf, pickleball courts, and parking. Maybe it's not, but we have no way of knowing based on the budget information that has made, that has been being public on your website. You say you want transparency and accountability, yet the county's budget contains a $3.59 million line item labeled simply as Park Administration with no breakdown of capital, O&amp;M, or personnel. Is the proposed stipend included in that figure? As of May 2nd, we only learned of the $75 per-child stipend through email and still have no details on future requirements or other, or whether that amount will remain stable. You also implied municipalities threaten to increase non-resident fees to pressure the county. And I want to be clear, the information that I shared in that email that was referenced at your last meeting was to share the range of options being considered, including maintaining the status quo, limiting participation to incorporated residents only, or increasing fees for non-residents. These options are a direct response to the uncertainty we have been dealing with due to shifting county policies. Further, you mentioned the county doesn't dictate what programs we offer or how many facilities we build, and that running rec programs isn't in the county's willhouse. While that may be your policy, it's factually incorrect to suggest no other counties in South Carolina offer recreational programming. According to SCPRT, at least 18 counties, including Lancaster, Charleston, Lexington, Greenville, Spartanburg, and Richland, they all offer county-wide recreation programming. York County is the exception, not the rule. Your suggestion that municipalities use hospitality tax to fund recreation programming is also incorrect. South Carolina Code, Section 6-1-730, limits hospitality tax spending to tourism-related projects or facilities and events. These funds do not subsidize local recreation programs like baseball, softball, soccer, or football. It was also stated that there's no justification for municipalities' capital projects. Tiki K, for one, has never asked the county to fund any of our capital projects. Like most cities, we create a capital project list based on identified needs, but we only act when funding is secure. That's how we've avoided a property tax increase for nearly 15 years. You're correct that you don't get a say in what we build because you're not funding it. Our taxpayers fund it, and they get the input. The IGA does, however, require us to provide adequate facilities, which implies some level of investment in capital projects. That directive came from the county. Likewise, who directed the county to purchase 2,000 acres for camping and bike trails with the future Catawba Bend Reserve? I'm sure it's going to be a great facility, it looks fantastic online, but what funding mechanisms were in place before making that decision? For context, Tiki K's recreation, operation, and maintenance costs just for recreation totals about approximately $819,000, and that's part of our $1.8 million department budget. We receive approximately $557,000 in revenue from program fees, which also includes the county's contribution from the rec tax that comes to Tiki K. The rest is covered by local taxes, tournament fees, and field rentals. County funding is critical, not for capital, but to sustain programming. Reducing that funding by nearly half, as the stipend would do, puts us in a very difficult position. Finally, regarding the registration fees for non-county participants, yes, as Mayor Savage just pointed out a few moments ago, those living outside of York County are assessed an additional charge. Those folks don't pay anything into the, towards the Recreation Tax Funding, so it's fair to ask them to contribute more. That practice is not prohibited by the IGA and is unrelated to county funding. In closing, your proposed changes replace a stable, nearly 20-year funding model with a new, untested system that slashes support to the municipal recreation programs and places an increased financial burden on the local taxpayers and the thousands and thousands of participants countywide. The municipalities have carried the responsibility of providing quality recreation programming for everyone in York County as the county, as the county has repeatedly, including at your May 5th meeting, stated, you're not going to be in active recreation business. The county is now withdrawing from its longstanding partnership while telling its cities to do more with less and changing the rules with no collaboration. I ask that we return to the table in good faith. Let's maintain the current FY 2025 formula through 2026 and use the remainder of this calendar year to collaboratively create a long-term solution that works for everyone, municipalities, the county, and most importantly, the residents that we all serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here with a group, so those of you who've... Please stand, thank you. My name is Jason Gillum. I'm at 548 Spring Landing Drive in Rock Hill. I am here about the recreation line item, but I'm also here as a business owner. So I run a business, it's a small tech business, and I employ about 30 people. I'm concerned about the plan to abolish the Recreation Tax District. That has funded programs from unincorporated areas to our municipalities for roughly 20 years. I believe this change could have unintended consequences for our community and also the local economy. This isn't just about numbers. The Special Tax District has worked well for our community for two decades. York County implemented this solution because it made sense. People in towns like Rock Hill already pay for recreation through city taxes. People in unincorporated areas need their own way to fund recreation without double-charging the city residents. The 1.5-mill tax outside the city limits, which I understand amounts to roughly 25 bucks, solves this problem fairly. For more than two decades, oh, sorry, for about two decades, this approach has given us excellent value for our tax dollars. Like many others, my family has personally benefited from these programs in ways that truly matter. When we first moved to an unincorporated part of York County in 2004, these recreation programs gave my kids opportunities to play sports, visit the local parks, take classes, et cetera. I've seen firsthand how these programs strengthen our community across all age groups. My son participates in Miracle League. He also participates in Unified Sports and several other Rock Hill programs for special-needs adults. Meanwhile, adults and seniors benefit tremendously from lifelong learning classes and other programs that help them acquire new skills and stay connected. These aren't just nice extras. They're essential services that help families like mine throughout every stage of life. They allow our children to develop their God-given talents and our seniors to remain active and engaged members of our community. That's something I believe we can all support. Now, I understand the county aims to provide stipends for youth programs, but this addresses only a fraction of what would be lost. Consider this, excluding youth athletics, only 22% of participants in Rock Hill programs are Rock Hill residents. The other 78% who participated in over 650 activities last year came from elsewhere, mostly unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the county. What happens to the adults and seniors who rely on these programs? What about the non-athletic activities that enrich our community? The proposed stipends leave significant gaps that would impact many of our citizens. Now, as a business owner, these recreation programs help me to attract and keep talented employees in York County. Money Magazine didn't name Rock Hill one of the best places to live by accident. These programs are part of what makes York County so special. I understand, or I think I understand what's happening here. Looking at it, the county needs roughly $1 to $1.4 million per year for Phase 1 of the Catawba Bend project. I get that. According to the master plan, Catawba Bend is a 15-year development project with three separate phases stretching all the way to 2035 or later. And what we're talking about is taking money effectively from existing, successful programs that serve our residents today to fund long-term projects that won't be fully beneficial to our community for many years. So let me be clear, I, I support Catawba Bend. I think it's, it's an awesome idea, but it's kind of like neglecting to repair existing roads so you can plan for a highway that's going to be useful at some point in time in the future, but people still need safe roads today. So, the Recreation Tax District works because it respects boundaries. Cities handle their recreation programs. The county districts ensure everyone else has access. This structure has worked for two decades, and dismantling a successful system needs better justification. We should find another way to fund Catawba Bend and other parks, projects at the county level. level that doesn't sacrifice existing community programs. These aren't just recreation programs, they're investments in our quality of life and our economic foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Greg Abraach, Menel, fifteen twenty, Benjamin La Trub, Circle, Fort Mill, two nine seven zero eight. I appreciate having a minute to speak on the impact of Parks and Recs programs, both within my family and within my local community, and I respectfully urge you to explore alternatives that maintain support for residents in unincorporated areas like myself. I've been a York County resident for a decade, and I have four children who have participated in T G K Parks and Rec for over eight years. I volunteer to coach all their sports, but with multiple sports a year, have easily coached around fifty teams. Parks and Rec programs have allowed my children to strengthen their physical and mental endurance, learn to cooperate as a high-functioning team, and take civic pride in their local community. What separates Parks and Rec from other sports options, such as private or travel, is the simple fact that everyone is welcome. Children from all backgrounds and all walks of life can fairly compete, and costs remain low due to countless volunteer hours from hundreds of parents like myself. I'm a proud Army veteran, and the reason I'm so passionate about this issue is that the Army and youth sports have many similarities. Both welcome individuals' willingness to strengthen themselves physically and mentally, both inculcate deep bonds that are difficult to replicate outside a competitive environment, and both encourage one to fight and compete for something bigger than yourself. This is why I volunteered to coach, because I believe it's my duty to give back to the community in some small way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dave Grochek, and I live at four fifteen Presidio Drive. And I want to speak to an aspect of park, recreation, and tourism funding that's not related to sports, it's lifelong learning. I'm an avid participant, as a county resident, in lifelong learning at Rock Hill. There are many of us seniors in York County who love what's offered. The stimulating programming, I mean, there are classes, there are lectures, there are field trips, there are tours. They benefit us, stimulate us mentally and emotionally, as well as socialization, which is very important for seniors. I, in fact, have taught a course in the program voluntarily as a county resident, communicating across cultures, and now I've been invited to serve on the advisory committee. If lifelong learning loses funding, the program will have to be scaled back. As of now, registration and participation are completely open, and the price is the same for everyone. This is a real blessing. Without county funding, it's likely that non-city residents like myself will have to pay much higher fees, or our participation will be diminished in some way. If the decision is made to withhold funding for lifelong learning, I wonder, would the county start its own lifelong learning program? It doesn't make sense. Lifelong Learning at Rock Hill is an award-winning program. It took five years to build it into what it is today, the, the five-year anniversary was just held in February, and we all benefit from it, all seniors, whether city residents or not. And I realize there may be some incentive for keeping, as it were, county money for county use, but Lifelong Learning at Rock Hill is county use. Every senior in the county can make use of it. To me, it's a win-win situation for the, for the county to continue supporting it. That's my view, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Charles Brewer, eighteen ninety-nine Rainforest Drive, York, South Carolina, also City of York, District Five representative. Recreational funding to the municipalities is needed. Now, I know many of you want to see changes in how that funding is applied, and stipends might be the change that is needed. However, a seventy-five-dollar stipend, you know, is not going to cover what is needed for recreational funding. The seventy, sixty dollars that's charged for softball, baseball in the city of York barely will cover maintaining the fields, changing the fields over, covering referee charges and things like that. So what I would ask is if stipends are the way we want to move forward, that we take the current, you know, data that's been provided, so unincorporated residents participating in those with the current funding that's been provided over the years, and divide that to come up with a stipend for each municipality, because each municipality is going to be different in the funding that they need, because we all have different fields, we all have different types of fields, different types of programming. So seventy-five dollars is not a one-size-fits-all. So let's say for the city of York, you take eight hundred and seventy-five unincorporated residents participating in the programming, and two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in funding that was provided, that roughly equates to two hundred and forty dollars per unincorporated participant, not seventy-five dollars. So if we want to go to a stipend model, I would just ask that it's calculated fairly in such a way that we can provide the same funding that's been provided at least through this last year until we can figure out how that works, and then how that can be applied. So that way, the funding stays the same for the municipalities until we can see how a new model works, and, you know, you all can see the changes that, that get applied. Additionally, as a resident, the one point five mil tax that's being applied to the county for, for the parks in the county and the Parks Department, if we're applying that across the board to fund the Parks Department, I'd like to see the day-use fees for parks taken away and/or reduced significantly. I mean, I would gladly pay an extra half mil not to have to pay a day-use fee on the way into a park. I understand charging to launch boats and things like that, but charging a day-use fee for a resident to go in and use a playground or walk the trails of a park, I'd gladly pay an extra half mil not to have to deal with that process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We don't typically comment on this, but we, we have been going for an hour on the public hearing. I would say that the proposal that management has put forth is a seventy-five-dollar fee on top of the programming fee that's charged, and, and it, the council has already requested that council, that management come forward with a, a process that makes sure that, that individuals are not charged, individual residents are not charged to get into the parks, with the exception of, of certain things that you have to rent, which everybody has to rent across the board. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? There's a lot more that can be said on the other side of this. I appreciate the comments, and certainly welcome for anyone else who wanted, wants to make any comments.
Madam Chairperson, Council, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it, and I understand that it's an arduous process to listen to a lot of folks talk, so I'll be brief. I'm a public servant as well. I serve in the city of T G K. I started my service as a coach twenty years ago. Cannot tell you the amount of children that I've coached, hundreds and hundreds of children during my years. I still have kids and parents that come to me today and thank me for coaching, thank me for the contribution I made to their lives. Like for you guys to go in your mind to a park, a park where they're playing baseball and softball, soccer. You hear the crowds cheering, you hear the coaches yelling, you hear the kids screaming for their teammates. I want to take you to one of your passive parks. You don't hear that. Takes money, takes time, takes effort, takes volunteers, takes staff members, staff members like we have. Takes a lot of effort to put forward that kind of a program. York County programming is some of the best in the nation. The reason that we are some of the best in the nation is because we have had a collaboration with our county for a number of years, and it's always worked. I'm going to leave you with a quote from my father. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
David Angel, thirty ninety, Lake Wiley Drive, the heartbeat of your new boat landing. I come to speak because I was informed this week that all of us, not me, I don't, but so many on our street, walk the streets and walk down into the park, and now we'll have to start charging a fee for this new program. I hope that it's not going to be the case. I also encourage each one of you to be prepared, because on the nice big weekends, we'll probably all be getting calls from the people who are backed up in line because of how the new design of the Ebenezer Book Lane is. We tried to get input to staff, said they would have input, did not get any input, they informed us after they had left the contracts and after they had already made the plan, and it ain't going to work. So there will be traffic backed up, Lake Boat Shore Drive blocking Lake Wiley Drive and the other two subdivisions, and as before, you'll be spending money on York County Sheriff's deputies have to come out there and direct traffic so we can get in and out of our subdivisions and in and out of our streets. Because of the poor planning, they would not move the guard gate closer to the water. In addition to that, Waze or any of your MapQuest will point you down Lake Wiley Drive. Lake Wiley Drive is not built for motorhomes and all the buses, everything will be coming down through there. We had this problem before. So mine is just a, be prepared, hope y'all can do something about it before, just if the good weather comes. My degree is Parks Recreation Administration from Clemson University. It seems like there is, needs to be more collaboration before we come to do this, before we make final decisions on this. I encourage collaboration, understanding, and let's serve all in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. I was not prepared to speak, but I received the email a little late this afternoon from the City of Rock Hill Parks and Recreation. Myself and my husband, we have a small business, and we have been sponsors for multiple teams, recreational teams, basketball and soccer for City of Rock Hill. We have two little boys that are seven and eight, and I just want you to think about the impact, the positive impact that these programs have on our young people, the confidence that it builds, the team-building that it teaches them how to work as a team, just all of those positive aspects. And then also consider the crime rates that are reduced because we are now putting our kids in positive environments, whereas if we don't have this, these opportunities for these kids, then you know what happens when they're bored? They go out and they get in trouble. My husband is from Lancaster County, and we see it all the time. They say they don't have anything like what we have in York County. So I just want you to think about not being Lancaster County. Let's continue to be the York County that we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing that I do think it's important, and we became aware of letters that have been sent out, apparently, to residents who live in the unincorporated areas who have participated in, in some of the park programming. What management reached out and asked the municipalities to provide was, was verification of the addresses, because previously there were some, some of the addresses weren't reporting correctly in, in where the folks were participating, but some of the letters suggested that what council is considering is completely eliminating any funding to the cities. That, that's simply not the case. And so we haven't been able to see all, you know, whatever these letters are or be able to respond to them, but I do think it's important to at least, to, to make that known.
Lisa Cook, fifteen ninety-five Callahan Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I'm here today, hadn't prepared to speak either, but it just touches my heart to think about the Parks and Rec situation that we have, and I want to remind you guys of what happened in the Fort Mill area north of the river fifteen twenty, fifteen years ago, when the school district was faced with some really tough decisions financially. They were cutting out middle school sports, and we've heard by multiple people the issue of cutting out sports for the youth, and I know I know some people here who have been impacted by it. I would urge you to come together and collaborate with the municipalities that are impacted by your decisions, like what our Fort Mill School District did with each of the booster clubs and the parents that were involved. We came up with a solution, we provided a Band-Aid and made it work so that the school district can continue having their sports programs. We did this as successful as we could in a collaborative effort. We haven't seen that collaboration north of the river in the way that I would anticipate having to have it to make these type of decisions, very similar to what we've seen with a lot of the growth that's happened. We've not been able to be at the table a lot of times, and we're paying with those consequences. As somebody else has said, I am an elected official as well, and I have to answer to constituents who don't realize they don't live in the town, but yet decisions that are being made are weighing on our shoulders. So I ask you to continue looking at this, dig a little bit deeper, and understand what the consequences may look like if a partnership is brought together by all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If we don't have any other comments? Do we have a motion to close?
Move close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing has been made. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed hearing? None. The public hearing is closed.
And I think Madam Chair summarized it very succinctly. I, I think we've talked about this multiple times. This all started with the Parks Master Plan, and I know multiple speakers have, have mentioned, and I've heard council share, that this has been a conversation the last five years. But in terms of this year, we were presented with a new Parks Master Plan to implement the county's vision for parks. And so anytime, and I know I'm new, I've been here a year now, so I can't say I'm brand-new, anytime you think about budgeting, you got to make sure you're, you can take care of your stuff first. And so when you have a new plan, you have a new strategic plan, you have a new Parks Master Plan, the, the fundamental question is, how are you going to fund that master plan if that's the vision? And so in that plan, and it's posted on the, the Parks and Rec website, you can go look at, at it and read it, we've got a number of recommendations from Clemson, and one of them was to unwind the rec tax, because another of the recommendations was to fund the capital, future capital program of our park system. So we have a lot of land, and we're turning that land into actual parks. Once you turn it into actual parks, you've got to run those parks. People are going to come to those parks. Ebenezer just opened up brand-new on Monday. People love it, it's busy, we've got to add people. We haven't funded the operations of our parks to the degree it requires. And so the other thing that the consultants shared was there was operational needs immediately, and so council addressed those in this year's budget to make sure we had current funding for people to help provide services in our parks. So as we received that Parks Master Plan, they can read, there's a number of other recommendations, and I, I want to respect everybody's time, the question was, well, what's next? So that Parks Master Plan went to the H E P Committee, and the committee began to weigh in on that. At the same time, as some of y'all shared, we did start to talk with the municipalities. At the same time, as some of y'all shared, we did start to talk with the municipalities. And so the committee wanted to consider moving away from, from the rec tax. So we offered up multiple options to do that. One of the things that the committee shared was there was an interest to either do a capital contribution or think about a stipend. I did talk with all of the county, the city managers, and I talked to other folks, and I think, you know, Charlie, you said we didn't listen, but I would say y'all made it loud and clear you weren't interested in the capital contribution. So we said, okay, we'll go look at the stipend option. And so that's what we did. What, what I think is unfair is that some are saying we haven't communicated. I might have been a little more passionate last meeting when I shared that I've talked with the city managers about this multiple times and I asked for their feedback. And that's what I'm supposed to do is the managers engage with my peers, and I appreciate y'all's feedback. What, what they shared was all different because every municipality is different, has different needs, and funds parks differently. And that's the beauty of York County. Some of y'all shared that. Each of our municipalities is very different and offers very different services in terms of recreation. And that's what makes this so hard. And so as you look at that and you say, okay, well, how do you address that and how do you connect with it? The thing that makes the most sense is to be data-driven and use actual registrations to determine how the county can support recreation. And so we asked the municipalities for actual data that we could map in GIS. And some of them shared right away, others held back because they shared that their attorneys told them they couldn't share. Okay? And so there was a back and forth about what data could be shared and what's not. I think for us as a county, there needs to be accountability when we're charging a tax and then providing it to a municipality, what they're actually providing in return. I don't think that's a big ask. And I know it might not be in the IGA, but I think it's a fair ask. And as Charlie shared, y'all have provided data in the past. But we've asked for, for more granular data so we can better understand the overall need. Because it's really interesting, and I'm a data nerd, I was talking to the York manager about this, Dalton, when you look at data, because York was the only one that gave us everybody's data, their, their residents and, and unincorporated residents, when you look at the data and you combine it across all the municipalities and all unincorporated, then you're actually starting to solve the underlying problem. And so the rhetoric doesn't solve the problem. The problem is we have unincorporated kids all across the county that are using recreation. However, as the counties changed in the past 20 years, so is recreation. And so more and more kids are being served in the western parts of the county, which historically have gotten the least amount of this tax. Okay? And so when you look at where the kids are being served, Clover serves twice as many as Rock Hill based on the data we've received. And so when you see the data and you begin to ask deeper questions, then, then it speaks even more to the reason for using registration data to be based on what should be provided. And so when you begin to ask that question, you start to say, well, what's the right number for the stipend? And this is hard to y'all. And I think you hear council admitting that this is hard, and y'all are admitting that this is hard. But how do you determine what that stipend should be? We looked at all of the fees across all the municipalities and they range from 50 to 100. And so it's a different service, it's a different cost, it's a different experience for every municipality. So when we looked at that and we tried to come up with an average, it's about $75. So that's how we landed on 75. But as some of y'all shared, what you're charging residents outside the county is either 30 or 40 dollars. What we're offering is 75. So you have a fee that you charge your incorporated kids. If you charge the unincorporated kids that same fee, we'll give you an additional 75 dollars on top of that. When we came up with that idea, I called every manager and I asked them for their feedback. Some provided it, some didn't. Some had great questions. We talked about logistics. We talked about how we could implement this. I have not gotten a formal, this is what we'd rather have. If that number is 100, I have not gotten that number. And so when you're negotiating and having a conversation, somebody's got to give the idea first. Right? And so what I've heard in the letters that have been sent out to everybody is that this is what the county's doing. But what I haven't heard is, well, what we really need is 177.5. What I've heard is we want exactly what we've gotten. And I think what you hear us saying is, we're trying to move past that because we don't think it's fair, we don't think it's equitable, we don't think it's based on actual data, and we think we should be paying for the unincorporated kids that are using the services. That's how I would summarize.
I think the only other thing I would add, and this is something that council is grappling with, is that what we're also learning is that some places aren't charging anything. Some folks are, the unincorporated areas are subsidizing for programs for other city residents. So if one city provides something, a lot of city residents are going to that. They don't pay the tax that exists now. So, and when you look at those numbers and trying to, to, to look at fairness, that needs to be considered, as well as simply having the verified numbers of the participation levels. And, you know, some areas are only charging folks outside of the county 40 dollars. Well, the unincorporated residents are apparently subsidizing it because that they're, they're paying a significant amount more to participate in the same program. So, so I think just, just to say this, and also looking at the funding mechanisms are, are important. Data doesn't lie, and I think that's what council, the recommendation was made from management, from a consultant through a committee. Council is considering those options. And, and yes, I can tell you as someone who's sat up here, we've been doing this. We've been having this battle for years. We got, we got to quit having this battle. And I think that, that we're going to come to, to a place that makes sense and that's fair. And I certainly do appreciate that. Some of you came out and spoke about other things. Appreciate you being here for those comments. Certainly are taking those to heart. Appreciate the information that you've shared in, in the public hearing. And the county does support and has supported capital funding for parks as well in, in the past. So I expect there will be a lot more information shared. It's hard to, to, to respond when letters are going out with, with part of the information. So we will continue that discussion. We appreciate the, the feedback that you've gotten, and we're going to move, and we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to move into our workshop.
Yeah, real quick. I, I know that you've made some comments, so I just give me two minutes once you finish up here, real quick, to speak. If you have something, thank you. Well, first of all, this has been, again, we appreciate everybody coming here tonight. This is, this is, I think it's been an extremely good discussion and to talk about and identify, you know, what your concerns are. You know, it's, I think as we look through this, I think it's important to really listen hard to everything y'all say. And there's a lot of things that were said tonight that we need to examine. And it's not just really the number of kids, it's the adult programs, right? It's the programs for disabilities. It's the understanding of what it is to maintain rec fields, to, to hire referees, the cost of that. You know, I know a lot of these coaches are volunteer, but there is a lot of participation and costs. There can be costs there that is accrued. And again, capital expenditures. You spoke of many different things tonight. Again, we've got a program that's been going on 17 years and it's, it's been working fantastic. The municipalities have all done a fantastic job in supplying and offering these programs. I think there's a lot that came out tonight that needs to be talked about, you know, as we go into our second and third reading. And again, I just want to highlight that a little bit, and I look forward to our discussion as we go forward. Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you. And once again, tonight, tonight's not the night to debate the issues, it's to hear the information. But I do think it was important to at least share some of that. And certainly continue to reach out to your council members, and we will, we will continue to, to receive that information. All in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. We'll take a five-
Item of business is to hear from our Coroner Sabrina Gast on the Coroner's proposed budget.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for allowing me to come speak to you again. It's always an honor to come and talk to you about what we do in the office. So I'm asking for you to reconsider the management's opposition or opposition to a position that we've requested. This is the second time that we've requested this position. If you remember, I came before you last year and requested this position and offered to write a grant to fund said position and was denied that opportunity. So I am back before you again, asking for the position. I'm not going to go through all of the slide. You have all of the handouts, so I'm not going to read everything to you verbatim. But the position is for an evidence technician in our office. The evidence technician position or the evidence room is actually maintained by mainly by one of my full-time deputies. So this is in addition to her other investigating jobs. I have another deputy that also does it as well, but she doesn't spend nearly as much time in the evidence room as one as Brittany does. And I actually have her here with me tonight in case you guys have any questions about what she does. But we're we're faced with the same thing that law enforcement is faced with. We are increasing the number of cases that we see, the number of items that we're taking into custody. And we have, we have to maintain chain of custody for everything that we bring into the office. We have shelves that are full mainly because they're full, because we don't have the time to dispose of them on the regular routine. So we're, we're running out of space. And thank you, because I know that we're getting a new building, but that's a couple of years down there or a couple of months down the road. And we're going to still hit that same obstacle of running out of space if we can't, if we can't start with disposal of the property that we have. And we simply can't do that because I have the deputy that's doing it is doing death investigations for the county full-time. So if you look on that second page, I kind of, we kind of pulled out for you what is actually maintained in our evidence room. So about 65% of everything that we have in there is biological material. So that includes things like tissue samples from autopsies, blood, blood cards for DNA that we have to maintain forever. And the other things, a major component is the medications that we collect on scene. So we collect any medication at a death scene that's related to that patient or is prescribed to that patient because it could have an impact on our death investigation cause and manner of death. So we maintain those, we bring those into the office. The individual investigating deputy is responsible for inventorying those pills. So they have to count those pills, they have to inventory them, they have to log them into our evidence program. And then they're maintained in the evidence room with the deputy coroner that does that. You can see on that third page, there's a kind of a more specific breakdown of what we have medications. It is not uncommon for us to go to a death scene and bring out three or four bags of prescription medications. And all of those have to be inventoried and counted. On that fourth slide, you'll see that we had some times on there. And this was dated April 30th, so that we could get it to you in time. We had counted a total of 62 from January 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2025. We accounted 62,588 dosages of pills that we had collected on death scenes. That is, the deputies are having to inventory those, individually count them and log them in. She actually ran some more numbers for me today. So as to date today, we've counted 76,487 pills. That's a difference of about 13,899 pills in two weeks from cases that we're bringing in. So it is a constant rotation of what we're seeing. Just so that you know, kind of how the, how the office is, is running to date. To date, I think Brittany said she had case number 835 since January 1st. And about 225 of those are actually scene calls where we've actually responded to the scene and have the potential for collecting property or evidence to bring back to the office. The next one with the medication counts kind of explains why we collect those medications. There is a statute where individuals cannot own or have in their possession a prescription medication that is not prescribed to them. It is against the law to do that. So not only that law, but also helping us to determine a cause and manner of death is why we collect those medications. And it's so important for our investigation. Brittany is the one that we did purchase several years ago. You guys purchased an incinerator for us. If you recall, that was back in 2021. And that was due to the fact that we have to burn those pills. We can't, there's no other way to dispose of them. We were taking them to Charlotte, North Carolina to burn them. They had, there was a company up there that would allow us to bring burn barrels up there to dispose of the medications. They got behind schedule, things kind of got off tech. And we were having, we were having multiple barrels in the office that we needed disposal. So we actually purchased an incinerator so that we could burn our pills ourselves, so that we can take care of that. Brittany kind of breaks down what that looks like. So she has to drop all of the pills out of the, you can't burn plastic, it's just the pills. So you have to separate the two, the bottles have to go to a waste disposal company. And then the pills actually have to be burned. When we do that, that is a full day operation. So you have to stay with it, you can't, can't leave it for evidentiary purposes. So she has to be there the whole entire day that that's done. We have also offered up that service to other agencies. Our Sheriff's Department has disposed of some items that, that they couldn't dispose of. So we've offered that up to other departments here in the county as well. You know, the next couple of pages are kind of what our evidence rooms look like. So you can see bags and bags of medications. The one, the next one where it says one complete burn session, that is an actual garbage bag, like a Herbie Kirby, that you put all the, your trash in. That is all of the pills that we have used to burn or dumped in there to burn for a burn session. I have, you know, the, what the evidence technician is going to be doing is, is going to be responsible for helping us to intake those medications, helping to count those medications, to log them, to make sure that chain of custody is maintained. We also intend on helping them or them helping us to do some autopsy, transfer of evidence from autopsy to our evidence room as well. They would be responsible for meeting with families to release that property back to them. Because again, we have to ensure who we're releasing it to, that it is the legal next of kin. So there's footsteps in between there that we have to do to make sure that we're not just releasing it to anybody. So there's lots of different steps that would be included in there. There's a whole list of duties that Brittany kind of has broken out for y'all on there as well. Is maintaining the federal and state laws as far as evidence disposal and maintaining. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you have. On that last page, we did, because we know, I know that you kind of like us to compare it to what other counties look like. On the last page of your presentation, you'll see that we've, we've done, I think there's about 10 counties as far as equivalent to our size and population caseload. There are only two counties out of that 10 that do not have a designated evidence technician, and that's York County and Ori County in the Ori County area. Everyone else either has a full-time or a part-time evidence technician that works on their staff to help them with that, those duties. I will be happy to entertain any questions you have, or Brittany is here as well, if anybody has any questions specifically for her.
Any questions?
So the one evidence position, that evidence, it's an evidence position, what is evidence and how do you name it?
So it would be an evidence technician.
Technician, okay, thank you. So that would be obviously a full-time position. And for the overall scheme of things, I know that the challenge is getting this stuff done and out there so you can serve the public even more, right? You've got public waiting on you to respond back on death certificates and et cetera. I'm sure this is part of the process to get to that point, this will speed that up.
That's correct.
I appreciate this feedback. Thank you. This is good. Thank you.
Quick clarification. So appreciate you being here tonight. Last year, in your budget request, you requested two new positions. And the justification for those two new positions were, you mentioned Ori County a second ago. Ori County, the cases per person for Ori County, what I calculated last year was 407 per person. You were at 212, actually 212.82 per person. So we had the second highest case count per staff member in the state of South Carolina. Out of, when we look at our peers, the seven, actually eight peers that, that I looked at, those being Berkeley, Ori, York, Lexington, Greenville, Charleston, Spartanburg, and Lancaster, so those are the ones I used. So last year, you asked for two new positions, and we turned down the grant position, which I'm with Councilman Aldad. I think we should reconsider that one this year. But why didn't you ask for two more this year?
Quite honestly, because I didn't feel like you would, you would approve the positions. I am here every year. I'm always asking for staff because we are, have been consistently, since I have been here the past 18 years, understaffed. And I am here, for those council members that have been here for a while, I am before you every, Mr. Roddy, I'm here every year, asking and begging for staff. We are consistently understaffed for what our office does and the case numbers and the constituents that we serve.
Based on the research I did, I have to agree with you wholeheartedly that you're number two out of seven of comparable counties. The other thing that I mentioned in last year's budget was I was concerned about the overall budget towards salaries, the incomes of your, your division, and I'm still concerned about that now. So for what it's worth, council, you want more information on that? Maybe we can ask staff to provide that to us.
I know, I've been here for, for quite a while, and you have been a champion, you know, trying to get more staff and asking for more employees. So when was the, when was the last time we increased your staff?
So last year, I came before you, we did request the two positions. When I came before you, you actually did champion, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we got another position. So we added one investigator position last year.
Thank you, Sabrina. Appreciate it. Do you have a question?
How much qualifications will this person?
So the qualifications, we actually have it listed on the thing. The, they would be required, you'd have to have a basic knowledge of evidence, evidence maintaining. If they were not already certified, we would send them to the class to be, to be certified in evidence logs. And it's, it's a class, I don't know, you can either go to the class or you can do it online. So we would certainly elect to do the most economical component. But it's, it's a course that they take to become certified as an evidence technician.
Madam Chair, I'll make one other comment right quick. I feel like I have to say this. We had an unfortunate situation happen at a close relative of mine's home yesterday. And we had to call on the services of Sabrina's office, the Coroner's office, to come over and take care of something. And I just have to say, it's not my first time having to work with you guys, and it's not something that you obviously look forward to. But it was a phenomenal experience. Christina did an unbelievable job, professional. You know, for the people in the house that obviously were struggling with the situation at hand, you all handled it greatly, and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a fantastic staff. I'm very proud of the staff members and staff that we've built.
Thank you, Sabrina. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Andy Clinton, President CEO of Rock Hill CVB.
Well, good evening. So Andy Clinton with Visi York County. First off, appreciate you guys taking the time to let me present to everyone. Going to give you guys kind of just a brief overview of the organization. Thankfully, I was able to meet with most of you guys one-on-one. So you guys have a pretty good understanding what we do, our funding model, how it all works. So brief overview, but really kind of I want to get into our budget and primarily what's y'all's funding, which is that York County accommodations tax, what that goes towards, what, what do you guys contribute to? So this is, this is how we operate. So it starts with you guys, right? Starts with you guys, then goes to our Board of Commissioners. We actually have three from our executive committee here tonight. I think it's important that you guys know what I'm talking to you guys about. They're very much echoing the same thing. We're all on the same page. That goes down to our organization, our funding models. It is our preferred hotel program, our destination marketing fee program. I know there's a few questions. Hopefully I've provided some clarity on that. That is a partnership with Rock Hill Parks Recreation and Tourism. And then we also have county funding, which is you guys, county accommodations tax, which is that hotel tax for the unincorporated hotels, as well as municipality tourism taxes. So mainly accommodations tax, but also some hospitality tax. That then turns into tourism, get people to stay overnight, get people to stay in hotels, go to carolins, go to our restaurants. That increases hospitality and accommodations tax, which then funnels back to you guys. So like I said, we're tourism for the county. I think it's important to note as far as our mission statement, down there at the bottom where you'll see, while also contributing to the quality of life for our residents. I've talked to you guys about this before, but yeah, at, at the heart of what we do is tourism. But I think a lot of what we do, whether that's our website, our social media channels, Yoko Buzz, that also affects the residents in York County as well. You guys can see 88% of our budget comes from hotels. That 54%, that is our preferred hotel program. 34% is the accommodations tax right there. I thought this was interesting. This was a survey that I took recently. So this is, you know, this is probably a couple of weeks old, if that. 211 tourism organizations participated in it. It's pretty common for tourism organizations to be funded primarily from, it says lodging tax, accommodations tax, hotel tax, whatever you guys want to call it. So 65% is roughly what that is. For us, if you add up that 19% from you guys, Rock Hill's at 6.6, just those first four are all accommodations tax. That's 34% our proposed budget for fiscal year '26. That adds up to 36%. So we're still an anomaly because, you know, we're primarily funded off of our destination marketing fee program. Also take note, the Fort Mill accommodations tax, I spoke to you guys on this. That is where there's a change as far as those unincorporated hotels. They were paying to the town of Fort Mill accommodations tax. That's where you do see the switch from 130,000 to 65,000. And that's a, that's a guess. I spoke to, that's kind of estimation. I believe his name's Eric Davis. He's Assistant Town Manager for Fort Mill. He emailed me, he said 58,000 when I emailed him this past week, but give or take. The other, I feel pretty certain about most of those other revenues, other than obviously York County accommodations tax, I'm here tonight. And then Rock Hill accommodations tax, I did present to them last night, but that is still one that, little bit, you know, up in there as far as decisions with the city of Rock Hill. Expenses, I'll go over this quick, but this is all of our expenses, whether that's, you know, the salaries, health insurance, retirement, and that gets into event expenses. Print design is our destination guide that we print 30,000 of, but other expenses associated with that. I'll get a little bit, dive into a little bit more as far as our recommended, so the 600,000 that you guys contribute to the organization, what that goes towards. Primarily advertising, as we're, Michelle from our office, she'll speak a little bit more about some of our advertising efforts. The event recruitment, that is, and I'll speak to a little bit more about that later. But also software costs, data, how we're able to analyze how well hotels do, the functionality of our restaurants, our attractions, our website is a huge asset to what we do and how we operate. This is our preferred hotel program. So this is the program we started a few years ago. It's very successful. You guys can see that as far as our overall budget. It's great that, I mean, this is voluntary. They don't have to be, it's similar to, you know, a member of the chamber. They don't have to be a part of our program. They want to be a part of our program because they receive benefits. So it's, it's great to kind of see that, you know, accommodations tax is something the hotels have to pay, right? They don't have to be a part of our program, but they're a part of it. And you can see, as far as our program, we're continuing to do really well. The hotels are continuing to thrive. You can see on that far light, right side of the slide, as far as the improvements, whether that's revenue, the ADR, average daily rate, everything is continuing to trend in the right direction. Here's another slide that shows it. I can kind of show some of, some of those same stats as far as occupancy continues to, to go up or maintain. ADR goes up, revenue. And then I can show you as well, these are the actual unincorporated properties. This isn't all of them. We actually, how our software works, it'd be difficult to show you, but we can at least show you the carolins corridor, which is a lot of the unincorporated hotels. So once again, very strong numbers, hotels continuing to do well. And I thought this was interesting. We actually have Placer, which is data that we can receive. So we can really pull a larger sample size. And that was, this is the Cambria Hotel off of 160, so that's an unincorporated property. And then Home to Suites, and you can see the partnership. And you can see the partnership with Rock Hill PRT plays a role in that. The Rock Hill Sports Event Center is high up on that list. Baxter Village, which you guys will be happy to see, that's an unincorporated area, Carowinds, and a couple restaurants as well. I believe you guys are all familiar with this, so we're very excited about this. You know, I, I think there, this is an opportunity for us to collaborate, work closer with York County economic development, work closer with the chamber. This is really a quality of life type of campaign, and I think you'll see this really come to life. We have a video that's supposed to set the launch next week at our, at our event that I hope you guys can all make it to, but really excited about that video, really excited about the assets. And, you know, and I spoke with, we met with Mitch and Dean, I believe it was last week, and we actually now have it, we're, we're meeting monthly, and I think that that's great. We need to be on the same page when Mitch is recruiting new businesses, or there's a, a new company coming into town. I mean, it really hits all of us, and that's what, that's what this initiative, that's what this brand is, to make York County, make it York County. All right, now I'm going to pass it over to Michelle with our office. She's our Director of Marketing and Communications. She's going to provide you guys some examples, that way you, you can really get a grasp of when we say marketing, what does it, what does it include?
Hi, I'm Michelle. I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications, and I have some examples for you today. My main job is to bring tourists to this area and get them to spend as much money as possible in our local economy. So I've been using our advertising dollars to do just that. We have a video that we had a, it's a promo for York County that runs on our website, and it went viral, a half million views, but that doesn't just happen organically. Sometimes you have to put money behind it to get it rolling with the momentum, and that's exactly what happened with that particular video. We did an in-flight video for inbound flights for Charlotte, for American Airlines, to get people who are already coming here to spend more money here in the fall. We have a partnership with Winthrop. We have a beer garden there now, where we feature all local breweries, and we have a great partnership with them now. We even just presented, we were the presenting sponsor for one of their baseball games. We recently signed a partnership with a local influencer, The Farmer's Feed, to highlight some of our farmers and different agricultural things that we grow in our area, some U-Pick farms, to try to get people to visit our farms and buy local produce. And that video will play on the next slide. We did some ads in QC Exclusive. This ad is coming up in their luxury issue next month to try to get people to come and make reservations and eat in York County and not just stay in Charlotte. And then we also have a new partnership with the Carolina Ski Show team, where we are wrapping the boat, we are on their trade show banner, so that when they go to trade shows in Florida, York County is represented there.
Did you know that there are over a thousand farms right here in York County, South Carolina? From farm-fresh produce to pasture-raised meats, our local farmers are doing incredible work. But here's the thing, only 11% of the food we eat in South Carolina is actually grown in South Carolina. That has to change. That's why I'm so excited to team up with Visit York County to highlight the amazing agritourism experiences happening all across the county. Get ready for behind-the-scenes farm visits, podcast episodes with local farmers, and so many ways to connect with where your food comes from. Follow along, we're just getting started.
I love that. I've got to interrupt. That, that's exactly what this, we've been looking for. I think that's great, highlighting our local producers is, is, is fantastic.
Yes, absolutely. I agree. So our website is our main source of traffic, right? We don't have facilities, so that is our asset. So we try to grow it as much as possible, get as many page views as possible. And so we write blogs and itineraries to get people out into the community, tell them what they can do, tell them where they need to go. And then where you see the little pictures at the bottom, that's an additional software that we have to pay for, so that we can highlight some of the community's photos and, you know, display those on our website as well. That's something called user-generated content, which somebody posts on Instagram and the community tags us, and it shows up on our website and shows them something that they can be proud of, right? We're highlighting our community as told by a local. We are, we redesigning our website, and we are featuring this interactive map, which we have, this will go live in the fall. And when you hover over each of these items, it will give you information on what you can do in these areas. Obviously, we know that the parks are really important to this area, so we have highlighted Ebenezer Park and Catawba Bend, so that way we can help further market those parks when they, especially when Catawba Bend opens. And then three softwares that we don't currently have, but we really want to get, to help us make strategic decisions when it comes to our advertising. Tourism Economics has a Website Impact Calculator, which allows us to see who has seen our website page, who showed up in market, and what amount of money we influence them to spend. So that will help me make further decisions strategically on what we need to be spending money on for our advertising, so that I can see how much it's actually returning on investment. The second one is Bandwango, which I don't know, a lot of you probably have heard of the Yoko Brew Trail. We, Bandwango is another software that allows us to do that on our site, so we can offer more trails, like coffee or ice cream, any type of local business, to get people out and out to our local businesses. That's an additional service. The third is called Mukrak, and that would help us get more PR and more articles, get more travel writers out, get more influencers in, so that we can fully diversify our marketing strategy.
All right, and then I will finish it up, just as far as the event recruitment process. It just needs to be known that, you know, a lot of these events, they don't just randomly come to our area. There's a process to make that happen, and hopefully, this is just an example. We are not going to be going after this. This is a Spartan race, this is for their world championships. There's a impact of $5 million. I mean, you have athletes coming from across the world. The bid fee for this is $450,000. Like I said, this isn't, this isn't something that we can go after. They're also asking for shuttle service, they're asking for ambulances, all that's in kind, 160-room nights. That's a lot. We're not going to be able to go after that, but we can go after other events, and that's part of, part of our process. Here's events that we're looking to recruit to York County, and a lot of them are asking for, you know, free rentals, or comp rooms, or, you know, help with staffing for athletic trainers, things like that. That's part of the, the model that we have to use to get them to come here, and ultimately we bring in, you know, 200 teams for an event. So here's some events that we're going after. I think it's also important to know, you know, as you guys develop, as far as York County Parks and Rec, these are events that we're working with to bring to, whether it's Ebenezer Park, or Catawba Bend, or Allison Creek. I can tell you, the cross-country championships, the state cross-country championships, I mean, they're wanting to come this fall. I don't think we're going to be able to make that happen at Catawba Bend this fall, but they're ready to go. Mud Girl, that's one that we're working on, that's 13,000 people coming, and I think they're wanting to come in 2027 to Catawba Bend. They're looking, we need to pay for the, the facility rental. Is the reward worth 13,000 people coming to town, but we have to cover the facility rental cost? I think it's probably there. Disc Golf, we're having a lot of these, the communication right now. USATF, that's the Cross Country National Championships. We're looking for, to bring the national championships for, for cross-country in 2028. That's where, you know, we had this talk about consistent funding from you guys. I mean, we're trying to bid on an event for 2028. I hope, you know, you want to hope that you have that consistent funding two, three years out. And then this just gives you another example as far as how we work lead generation, how we work recruitment. Now that we, we know that we have a hotel coming in downtown York, these are potential conferences that we can go after, and honestly, using this building as well. I think that that's a great recruitment tool, that you have the downtown York Hotel, and you have this facility to be able to bring in conferences like that. So we're going to start exploring that. So that's, that's how our mind operates as far as event recruitment. I think that's it. Last thing I have, kind of messed up a little bit on the slide, but May 19th, so this coming Monday, before y'all's council meeting, be sure to make it upstairs. We have food from some of our restaurants that we work with, and just celebrate tourism in the area. So appreciate the time again, and let me know if you guys have any questions for me.
Yeah.
He, he always has the best-looking magazine. But, but they ain't never pictured me in none of my graphic cards.
That's why they're so good, Tommy.
Oh, my goodness. But they are, though. They, they just are.
The local artists that, that did that, that did that cover. We really wanted to try to capture the entire county on that cover, so, yeah.
So if, if any of you have been up channel surfing late night throughout the day, you know, it's not uncommon that you pass over one of the sports channel ESPN, and you look and you say, wait a minute, that looks like Manchester Park, or that looks like the sports and events, and when they're doing the cornhole, or something going on in the arena. How often do you partner or collaborate with Rock Hill when some of these events come to town? I've seen wiffle ball, I've seen kickball, I've seen a lot of things show up on ESPN, Disc Golf, and a lot of things. So how often?
Yeah, and a few of them are that there. I mean, and to your, a lot, you know, a lot of those, I mean, they, they take a lead on a lot of their recruitment, they do have a tourism arm. This partnership that we have really works, it works really well, because some of these, the Ocho, you know, they take the lead on that, but we still help as far as providing, once they bring the event in, we make sure all of them get links to our website, links to discount hotels. We really want to make sure that they stay in hotels in York County, and hopefully our preferred hotels. But also information as far as restaurants, things to do in the area, discounts to carolins, all those amenities.
Now, I know, I've, I've met with you and some of your board members. Kind of go over, explain how the, the, the partnership with the hotels work, and some of the revenue sharing that you, you're in partnership with the city of Rock Hill.
Yeah, so it's, it's 26 hotels. The Rock Hill PRT, they receive 35% of that partnership, and grant, and, you know, 60% of the revenue of that whole, the, the 26 hotels, 26, or 60% of that comes from Rock Hill Hotels. And a big part of it is the contribution and how that partnership and how the DMF is collected. A lot of it goes towards, you know, their efforts and our efforts together, as far as the amount of events that they bring into their facilities. I mean, they have a really good engine as far as the Rock Hill Sports and Events Center, BMX, and Manchester Meadows. So it's a partnership that, you know, we don't take for granted.
And I know, Rick, this last thing, I know we made some drastic changes as to how the CVB was funded a couple of years ago. There was a lot of anxiety as to, will this thing work? What's it going to look like? Kind of share with some of our new board members, and county manager, and new people, how that has worked and the success of it, because we're looking to make some other changes, and that we've gotten a hornet's nest stirred up, people thinking it's not going to work. So kind of, you've been there since the changes that we've made, kind of go over how that's been the last couple of years.
Yeah, um, I mean, yeah, I will say, I mean, we had to, we had to be creative as far as from a funding model, as far as when changes were made, and that's where this whole destination marketing fee program started. We weren't the first ones in the state to do it, but one of the first, and, and that's where ultimately the partnership with the city of Rock Hill and all that evolved, because we, we had to adapt as, as far as an organization. And like you said, you've seen it, yeah, it, it's doing really well. Accommodations tax, the hotels in general, businesses are, are doing really well overall in this area. So as hotels do well, our organization's going to do well, I would, I would hope, you know, more, more hotel revenue, it's obviously going to help our DMF, but hopefully that also means more accommodations tax from you guys and the city of Rock Hill and Fort Mill, et cetera.
Andy, I'll just, I'll say, I think you've done a fantastic job. I think your, your group is doing a fantastic job, and you have a good group that, that's doing this. I really like the Make It York County logo. I think that's effective. I like the use of the farm stuff. I think sometimes the county doesn't get as much credit as I think that they should for the support that they provide to the programming, and so I think what started out, when I first got on council, is, is the CVB being almost entirely or predominantly funded by York County ATAX funding. As a result of what we have now, the, the actual hotels are paying a lot, a huge portion of that. I do think that it's important to know, so, so a lot of folks don't understand that ATAX revenue, there, there's unincorporated ATAX revenue that's generated from the hotels that are in the unincorporated areas, and then each of the cities that has hotels, they generate their ATAX as well. And in this particular case, I know that the county has funded historically, at least, I think that it's up to 400,000 is the contribution of the county. And, and, and I know that, that about 400,000 actually goes to the city of Rock Hill as a result of the partnerships with, with the county. Is that correct? Or that's what's, what's being slated for this year?
Yeah, we received 407,000 from the county this year. That was spent towards, yeah, advertising efforts, and then we do have our DMF program that generated, you know, it's, you know, 1.2, probably closer to 1.3, and, yeah, 392,000, 35% of that DMF fund goes towards the city of Rock Hill. That makes sense?
Yep. And I, I think that, I think that it's just important to, to give credit to the county for supporting that program, because it benefits everyone, and, and the county doesn't get that return. And so I think that, that, that amount of funding, it's, it's not, it, I think it just highlights the, the support that the county does, I mean, continue to give to all of the programming, and I think, I think what y'all are doing is fantastic. I think you're doing a great job.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah, real quick, first of all, Andy, great job, great job, team, nice work. I tell you, this, this thing is a go-to location for events and finding out what's going on in the area. Critical. You know, just recently, we launched a small business toolkit, which, again, I know you're all part of that, and you've had many discussions. I think that's a nice marriage between what you all are doing and the small business toolkit, because businesses are, are, are basically coming into the area, seeing what can be done, and what's around here, and what, what they envision as an opportunity. So I think the marriage of that is really great. The question I have on that is that, looking at your site, and then looking, bringing on the toolkit, do everything you're doing, you know, every, there's a lot of push around AI, right, and interacting on these sites. Can you tell me a little bit about what you may be doing on that? Because again, it's a quick access to get to what you're looking for. Just want to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we are exploring AI, and I'm, I also, I always want to explore ideas, think outside the box, do things creatively, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we do have software that we're looking into, that will have AI as far as, if somebody's going to go on our website and ask, you know, what's the best cheeseburger in town, like, it will provide an automated message just off of information blogs that we have on our website.
Right. Yeah, exactly. You can scrape your site and bring up what the answer is. That's good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to what you just mentioned, I would like to say this, that the evolution of the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau originally, I think it's pretty powerful that you're helping us bring the events in, and then secondly, and I'm going to lead to a question, that when the events come, you're dripping, you've already picked up on the, from their cell phones, that's what I want you to talk about for a minute, how you're picking up this data, and you're actually marketing the local restaurants, bars, hotels to the people before they come and when they get here. Will you talk about that for a second?
Yep. I don't want to scare anybody too much, but yeah, I mean, basically, we, we are able to pull data to, to make very educated decisions. I mean, we, we know people that go to the Sports and Events Center, that a handful of them are going to Burgers &amp; Barley are hobos, and we can craft messages, craft blogs that go towards that customer. So just like, you know, if we know those two hotels and unincorporated, those two unincorporated hotels off of 160, if, you know, a decent chunk of them are going to Baxter Village, guess how we're going to craft that message? So I mean, it, it works out really well when you can see, especially if you know, like, summer really well when you can see, especially if you know, like Summerfest is a good example in York. We know a decent amount of those people are coming from more of that Greenville, Spartanburg area. So where are we gonna help York with some of that advertising for Summerfest? We're gonna target that Spartanburg area. But yeah, we, we utilize that information a lot.
Yeah, congratulations on what you all have done. It is phenomenal.
Thank you.
Having significant impact on tourism here in York County.
Appreciate it, Andy. Next, we have Dr. Karen, Carrie McGuire, the Executive Director of Keystone.
Good evening and thank you so much. There it is. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm grateful for an opportunity to be here with you again this year. I'm Dr. Carrie McGuire, the Executive Director of Keystone Substance Abuse Services. Keystone is the York County Authority for Substance Abuse Addressing, Prevention, Intervention, Treatment and Recovery Services for any York County resident who would benefit from that. And there are a lot of different ways that we do that, sort of across that spectrum of services. Before I go too far into my conversation with you tonight, I do want to acknowledge some team members from Keystone that are seated right behind me. David Viscusi is our executive, or our Assistant Director. And then we've also got a couple of board members with us. Alexis Ellis is our current Board Chair, our former Treasurer. And our current Treasurer is Elise Harper, and she's back there as well. So they're here just to support. And also, if I have questions about, if you guys ask questions and I can't answer it, we've got backup dancers for me as well. So that's helpful. But anyway, thank you so much again for the opportunity. The, I always, before I talk too much about what Keystone does, I always want to keep the mission of our organization at the forefront of any conversation I'm having. It is the focal point of everything that we do. And so just, I'm gonna read it exactly off that slide, and Keystone's mission is to improve the quality of life for individuals and families by educating, treating and providing support for those impacted by substance use. And when we talk about substance use, that can be everything from a young person who's choosing vaping for the first time, or maybe gets in trouble at school because of that choice, all the way, all the way through that individual who's gone through treatment and is in recovery and is trying to live in recovery and have a healthy family and life in our county. So that's, that's our mission. Like I said, I always just want to keep that at the forefront. I know that you all have taken time to review the budget request that I submitted on behalf of Keystone this year. So I won't belabor it, but just a couple of reminders. And I just want to give you an opportunity to, to hear some more context around the request a little bit and also to ask any questions that you may have that I can help provide clarity for anything that may be a question in your mind. So the two areas, the two components of our request this year are school-based clinical services and our withdrawal management, often referred to as detox services. Those are the two areas that we're focusing on in our request. So currently Keystone, for several years, I think this is our fourth year of providing student assistance program services in our school districts, all four school districts in York County. What that means is we have four full-time clinical counselors, one for each of the four school districts. Those clinical counselors receive referrals from the school districts, but also self-referrals. So like a student and their family can say, hey, there's an issue here and we would like help addressing it. It's substance-related. Keystone's the right place for them to receive that assistance. And they can work in collaboration with the school district that they're within to get that connection made right there in the school where they are every day. But also, school administrators are making referrals to us when they have issues come up, code of conduct violations, I kind of referenced vaping. That is the most predominant thing that we're seeing in our schools. There are other things, but if you ask anybody who is working in one of our middle or high schools at any district in our county, they're going to tell you that it's about to drive them crazy, the number of students that they're, that are vaping in their schools. So it's the easiest example to give, but alcohol is still an issue, opioids, like people getting, young people getting medications out of the medicine cabinet, or maybe they had their wisdom teeth out and it turns into an issue as they're recovering and they develop a dependence on that medication and then they just continue seeking it. Ultimately, sometimes it does get them in trouble at school and so we're there to help. So the benefits of and goals of that are to reduce those discipline incidences. We want to keep kids in the classroom. We want to keep them learning. We want to help them be as healthy as they can so they can focus and, and learn and have success and graduate and go do those amazing things that we want them to do. We want to increase attendance, make sure that they're in class, that they're in the classroom that they're intended to be in, not in school suspension, not out of school suspension, not in alternative school, but sitting in the classroom where they know, we know that they will thrive the most and are gonna get exactly what they need day in and day out. And then ultimately to reduce substance use amongst those young people who are in our schools. Some outcomes that we've seen so far, all four districts, the duration of this program so far report a reduction in discipline encounters. And we, we track that data. We look year over year to see, here's the list of students that were referred to one of our counselors because of a disciplinary concern. And there was an intervention made. And of those, this percentage had a repeat offense of some sort where they were referred for a disciplinary concern within that same academic year. The, all four districts continue to report reductions in those, those repeat offenses. The overall attendance average has increased among students who received intervention from our school-based clinical counselors. And then we do, every two years, we do a survey of seventh, ninth and eleventh graders and on an ongoing basis, one of the, there's a lot asked in that, in that. It's almost like a school climate survey, but specifically around substances. And one of the things that we ask about is if students reported 30-day use. Hey, in the last 30 days, have you used alcohol? Have you used marijuana? Have you used tobacco? Have you used tobacco in the form of a vape? You know, and we ask it in those broken down categories. And every single one of them shows a decrease in students' 30-day report of use year over year. And so we are excited to see that percentage continue to, to decrease. Students are saying, whether they're lying to us or not, we can't tell. But usually because it's an anonymous survey, they're pretty honest. And so we do have, have a reduction in that. So I think that's a really important outcome. The other thing that happens in the schools that I'm not talking about because I'm not asking for funding related to it is our prevention efforts. Also, within every school district in York County, we have a prevention, a school-based prevention specialist designated for that district. They're doing things like teaching a life skills curriculum in every sixth grade classroom in their, part of their health curriculum. They're talking about the substances. They're teaching them things like refusal skills. If this comes up in your life, how do you maneuver that? What words do you use? Healthy choices, alternatives to substances. When you're feeling stressed out, what can you do as a healthy choice? Hey, go to one of our parks in the area, you know, things like that. Because I think that's a great outlet. But that's an example of what's happening. Most of you in here, if you've ever had kids in a school district locally, or you yourself growing up had something like Red Ribbon Week, and that's, we, we send out toolkits for elementary schools to use to know how to roll out prevention initiatives within their schools. We are in the schools. We're going to high schools during their lunches and we're doing trivia time and we're giving out prizes and we're engaging with the students. So that is also a component of this program and they work in concert with the clinical counselors. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight as that, that is a component of this program. So the funding that we're receiving currently, you all are helping to fund this program in our current fiscal year that ends June 30th. You guys, we, we receive, just kind of, I want you to get a picture of how we fund it currently. We receive SCORF, which stands for South Carolina Opioid Relief Funding, which helps us pay for the actual salaries and fringe for those clinical counselors. So you all have given us permission to apply for funding through SCORF on behalf of York County. And we do that consistently to make sure that we're, we're trying to, the intent is to combat the opioid epidemic. It actually addresses all the substances, but that's the focus is the opioid epidemic. We also currently are getting from you all $40,000 and that money helps us to cover actual direct treatment costs. So if we're sitting in a room at a school and we're doing an assessment on a student who is indigent or uninsured or underinsured, we're paying for that because they can't afford to. So we're not gonna deny services. That is our model across the board for everybody in York County who comes to us. We're not denying services because of ability or inability to pay insurance or not. And so the, a portion of the $40,000 that you gave us this year is going towards paying for those costs if they need ongoing treatment. We're helping support the cost of ongoing treatment. And then the other part of it, a very small portion of it, is travel expenses just to and from the schools because, I mean, think about Clover School District. You go to, go to Clover High School, the ninth grade campus is right there. They're really close. But if that same counselor then has to go to one of the middle schools, two of the middle schools, they are pretty spread out. So it helps us cover just the cost of mileage and gas for those, those counselors who are using their personal vehicles to go school to school to serve students. And just so you know, this year, just since July 1, and in a minute, we're gonna have an opportunity for comparison year over year, we have served 193 York County students just from July 1 to April 30. And keep in mind, July 1, that's amazing, but school doesn't start till August. So we had kind of a month there where there was a lull at the very beginning of our funding cycle. So that's really from August to the end of April. 193 students who accessed our services, school-based, because they needed a support from our clinical counselors. So we are requesting the $40,000. Again, this year, we're not asking for an increase in that. We just want that continued support to kind of complement what we're getting from SCORF to help actually pay for the services because we don't have SCORF funding currently that's paying for the services. Again, same exact thing, paying for travel, paying for the cost of those assessments and those treatment services that are being provided. Just to kind of give you an idea, the average total cost of services for the first three, we're in year four of this program now, for the first three years of the program was 32,117. So we're just barely above that mark. And because we're seeing an increase in numbers, we think that $40,000 is the right place to keep that request. And the reason that we're saying that is, if you look at that fourth bullet on the left half of the screen, it tells you that over the first three years of the program, Keystone was, has served a yearly average of 125 uninsured students through our program. And we're already at 193 and we're not quite done with the school year. That was just through the end of April. So we see the need growing and we want to continue to be responsive to those needs. And we want to make sure that any student who should have that need has access to what we can provide. We do bill insurance and Medicaid. Our, our teams work very closely with families. Our billing department calls families and says, hey, your child's been referred. We would like, do you have insurance? Are you covered by Medicaid? And we get that information upfront as long as the family cooperates. And if we have a parent who is not interested in sharing that information with us, we still see the student if they'll consent for the child to be seen. So we're still, but we are billing insurance and Medicaid to make sure. And then we have individuals who can afford to pay out of pocket. They're paying their co-pays. They're doing their deductibles and all of that. And we will always continue to pursue that. So it's not every student seen. It's just those that are uninsured or underinsured and can't afford. Or, and when we say underinsured, if they have a plan that has an extremely high deductible, that's underinsured. A typical family who has a super duper high deductible, many of them aren't gonna be able to ever reach that for us to then be able to have it covered by the, the plan that they're under. We also receive treatment block grant funding that's for uninsured residents of York County. And this is for all uninsured people, not just adolescents. So we, we get a chunk of money every year and that's to go to every adult who comes to us who isn't covered some other way, who can't afford to pay. They might be indigent. We do a financial assessment on everyone who comes through our doors for treatment to determine their ability to pay and we apply that block grant funding. So when we ask for money to support just the adolescents, it's freeing up more money that we can use to serve adults who are accessing those services. We exhaust our block grant money. At this point, right now, we are out of block grant money for the year for anybody who comes to us for treatment. So just to kind of give you a picture of that. And then we write off services because again, we're not denying people access. They're coming to us for services. And if we don't have a payer source, we just write it off. So I think that's an important thing to note. When we ask for $40,000, it really is because we want to target this one population. Okay? The other piece I want to talk about is our withdrawal management program. That's, traditionally, we hear that referred to as detox. That's typically a three to five day stay. It's medically monitored withdrawal management services for anyone who needs to come to us. And of course, we serve any York County resident. We will go out and pick them up. We've had someone who called us from behind a dumpster at a, at a furniture store and said, I can't get to you, but I need your help. We had a bed. We sent an Uber and picked them up and brought them in and served them. So we, we really are trying to provide access the best way we can. The top priority are pregnant women because we're saving two lives when we're, or sometimes three, depends on, yeah, multiples. But that being said, we do have other target populations, predominantly those that are using substances that really place them at high risk for severe illness or death as a result of that withdrawal process. So we want to help them manage that process and we start giving them a small dose of treatment while they're there. So hopefully they'll catch that bug and want to continue whether in a residential program with us, somewhere else in the state, or an intensive outpatient program right on site with us. So we try to continue that service to them. But we're talking specifically about that three to five day initial stay with us. So far this year, between July 1 and April 30, we've served 142 York County residents. And while I don't have the exact number, I do know it's up from last year at this point in the year. Just that trend is, we're trending upward. So when we talk about staff, we have a medical director, we have nurses around the clock. We can't provide detox services without around the clock medical care. We have inpatient technicians. We have clinical counselors that are providing the treatment portion. We have case managers who are connecting them to other areas that they need care, housing, transportation. Maybe they need Medicaid and we're helping them apply for Medicaid. We also have peer support specialists in our inpatient unit who are people who are living in recovery and they're coming alongside people while they're coming in our doors and sitting with them and helping them through that process. So far through April 30th for fiscal year '25, which is our current fiscal year, as you know, we have spent 563, $52,000 to employ our nurses, our inpatient technicians, our clinical counselor, the inpatient coordinator, our peer support specialists and the case manager. That is not including the physician. That is just everybody else. The amount covered of that 562,000, the amount covered by other sources is 234,216 dollars from DAODIS, which is our state organization that we report up to. And that's how much we're allowed to use. So we get other funding, but that's how much we're allowed to use to cover personnel costs. So you can see it doesn't meet the mark. We need help with that because we can't use the other monies that we get or to pay for things like treatment or supplies or medications, but not for personnel. So when we talk about a request to cover a portion of staff salaries, we're asking for 62,500. We did previously, and I've, I've had this conversation with you all that were here with me a year ago. So just as a refresher, you all, the York County, York County Council funded 125,000 for us to cover what we refer to as operations expenses, but it was to cover staff salaries, portions of what we needed to cover. And we started applying for SCORF funding and SCORF funded that 125,000 for one year. And then they have discontinued funding that ever since. So we're in year two now, right now, where they didn't fund that. They said, no, that's not something we're willing to fund. So we are, like I said, we're providing that service whether or not people can pay for it. And the, this coming year, when we anticipate with our budgeting, what are difference between revenue and expenses in fiscal year '26 just for withdrawal management? You can see the bar graph there. It's a difference of negative 70,745,59. So we're asking to help just cover that gap a little bit. The 62,500 is half of what the county used to fund towards this expense. And we're just asking for your help to fill that gap, the, the difference between revenue and expenses that, that you see on the screen. And that's all I have for you currently. Do you have questions for me? Anything else that I can speak more specifically about?
I think you've been very thorough. Do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Making a big difference. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I appreciate your time. And if any questions arise as you all are discussing it further, please feel free to reach out. I'm available. David Viscusi is also available. He, Assistant Director. We would both be more than happy to field any questions you all have.
Thank you, Dr. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Adrian Wood, who is the Executive Director of Safe Passage.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Woods from Safe Passage. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you today. I drove up this afternoon and said, oh my, I've never seen a parking lot this full before. And this is my fifth time coming. So it is a pleasure to see that people are interested in local government. I think we oftentimes think about local government and recognize that people tend to think of a state, federal, but it's the local government that really makes a difference in everyone's lives. And I can honestly say that your support has been beneficial to Safe Passage. Many of you may not recognize that we've been in existence 35 years providing domestic violence services in this county, 20 years of providing sexual violence services, and then 11 years as a child advocacy center. And before I go any further, we have a video and it shows the impact and it illustrates what we do and how we do it. I want to show the video and then I'll go into some additional detail about our budget.
Good evening, Ms. Johnson. I don't know if you remember me, but I came through your program about two years ago. I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you did for me and I appreciate you. The talks with me and your advice, the knowledge that you shared with me. I just wanted to let you know that I kept them words with me the whole time. And I'm doing good. I just graduated from nursing school and I haven't looked back yet. And I hope all is well.
Safe Passage offers a beacon of hope to those who have experienced domestic violence, child abuse and sexual assault. This beacon illuminates the path towards healing and recovery. The unwavering dedication of this incredible organization is one that strives to heal wounds and to rebuild lives, always prioritizing safety and fostering a future where survivors not only overcome their past, but also thrive in a renewed sense of strength and resilience.
If you would have asked me a year ago, would I be sitting here today? Probably not. I was in a very, very dark place.
I was in a very, very dark place in my life, but I knew I had to get help. It was a very toxic relationship, a very abusive relationship. Towards the end of our relationship, it got very physical. I was tired of the abuse. I was tired of being, not knowing my self-worth, not knowing who I was. It just got to the point where I just couldn't take it no more.
When you look around and you see these things going on and nobody addressing them, it continues to grow. And so Safe Passage just there is the stopgap. Safe Passage says, no, this should not be going on.
And through word of mouth, it gives people a confidence that I might not know personally what to do, but I know someone who knows. That helps the community because there is a place to go to seek help, whether it's for yourself or for others.
According to the statistics, all of us, whether we know it or not, are impacted by domestic violence. We will all know someone who's been sexually assaulted if we don't already. We will all know someone who has been abused or who was abused as a child or who witnessed abuse in their home.
Topics of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse are heavily stigmatized and not talked about. And so to watch families, to watch individuals, to watch kids get to come in Safe Passage and kind of let those walls down and to be able to start and walk through a healing journey and to be able to recognize the strengths they have within themselves to get to where they need to be, it's just a huge honor.
It's just warming to your heart to be able to help somebody get started again.
I felt like it was my last chance. I felt that if I didn't get their help, that I wouldn't know where I would be. So I'm thankful for them. They truly changed my life.
By helping Safe Passage, we empower the survivor. We eliminate the abuse, we engage the community, and we engender change.
Your contribution will ensure that Safe Passage can continue to provide more services to individuals. We can move to a bigger space. We can continue to create new programs such as the rapid rehousing program and the transitional housing program. And so when you volunteer or you donate to Safe Passage or you become a part of this family, you're impacting victims in your community.
We need your help to be able to continue to do that and to provide safe spaces for our clients and for survivors of domestic violence, child abuse, and sexual assault.
Your support enables us to educate, advocate, and empower, but also ensures a foundation of safety, creating a world where love is free from fear and families can thrive without violence. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can rewrite the narrative and offer hope where there was once despair. Together, we can declare that it indeed takes a community to end domestic violence, child abuse, and sexual assault with you, for you.
And before I go further, I'd like to introduce you my Director of Financial Human Resources and one of our board members, Nicole Catticelli, today. I think it's important to note our stats on our 2024 annual impact, and this is just a snapshot of the people that we've impacted in this county. The majority of our clients are from York County, so approximately eighty-three percent. We provided eight hundred and thirty-eight services, we provide, we assisted eight hundred and thirty-eight domestic violence and sexual assault clients from York County and five hundred and sixty-eight CAC clients. Our numbers for our Child Advocacy Center are rising. For the last, I'll say four years, we've had an increase over ten percent of seeing children who are possibly victims of child abuse and neglect. Those numbers are not going down, they are increasing every day. The last year, we actually, the calendar year, we provided three hundred and seventy-four forensic interviews. That is up from the prior years. And those, like I said, those numbers are not going down. We actually housed twenty-eight individuals in our rapid rehousing program. So that is a new program that we started in 2021. It was a little shaky start, but we have gained our footing. And it makes a difference when you have a domestic violence or sexual assault survivor who can't find housing. And it may be a number of reasons. And as many of us know in this room, housing is not cheap now. A one-bedroom in Rock Hill will cost you nine hundred dollars. So imagine having children and needing maybe two or three bedrooms and fleeing from a violent situation. So we have been able to partner with several landlords and work with several different apartment complexes to get housing for domestic violence and sexual assault clients. And we pay a percentage of their rent and we provide services, counseling, as well as financial planning, budgeting, and things that will help them be prepared so that they can have a safe, stable home. Statistics show that the majority of people who are in domestic violence situations do not leave because of finances. And oftentimes, there's financial abuse in addition to the violence and emotional abuse. So being able to provide these services to York County residents has been a game changer. We have a waiting list of at least fifteen families waiting to get on, but we just don't have the capacity to be able to provide services to them. The counseling that we provide, four hundred and seventy, excuse me, counseling sessions last year, we provided four hundred and sixty-two sessions for adults and two hundred and thirteen for children. The average counseling session, fifty-minute counseling session in South Carolina ranges between one hundred and twenty to two hundred, over two hundred dollars. And so being able to provide trauma-informed counseling to families, not only children but adults, makes a difference in how well they adjust and how well they heal from the violence that they've been exposed to. I do want to point out the economic impact of domestic violence. We don't have the stats for sexual assault, we don't have the stats for child abuse, and we're trying to work with Winthrop University to actually capture that economic impact to the county, to the community. Because what most people don't realize is there is a cost to domestic violence. If you, you'll note that the loss of life cost in York County in 2020, three million dollars. Three million dollars. Policing costs, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, court costs, over a million dollars. The loss of worker productivity, five million dollars. Mental health care costs for domestic violence survivors, one million dollars. Close to two million, physical health care costs, almost four million dollars. And so the total economic impact, according to the 2020 study conducted by the Jamie Kimball Foundation for Courage, New York County was nineteen million dollars. So it's not just an issue for my neighbor, it's not just an issue for the person in my classroom, the person at the grocery store, et cetera. It is a negative impact to our county. It takes away nineteen million dollars, almost twenty million dollars from my county. And so we have an opportunity to continue to decrease those numbers because Safe Passage is unique. One, we're one out of four nonprofits that actually provides the full gamut in regards to violence, sexual violence, child abuse, and domestic violence. We're also one of four non-hospital settings that children can go to for a medical exam. And that medical exam not only covers York County, but covers the region. So we're making an impact and we're asking this year for a little bit more money. I will admit, you have been very generous to us the last four years. But this year, we are seeing an impact because of things at the federal and the state level. We have lost funding for our rape prevention education that was funded through the CDC. That was thirty-six thousand dollars. We have lost, well, I will say that the South Carolina Legislature has elected to not fund earmarks this year, which means that our Child Advocacy Center will lose approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. So we're already at a loss of approximately ninety-two thousand dollars and we expect that may increase depending on the federal government. So we do expect that as the government size shrinks, that there are less money and less employees at the federal level, that it will impact how much we receive. So that is the expectation for a number of nonprofits across the U.S. that as the government shrinks, it does have an impact at the local level. So we're asking for two hundred thousand this year to ensure that we can continue providing services to everyone who needs services. We are almost at capacity, I will say. We have the majority of our, a big part of our revenue comes from federal government and is sixty-two percent. When I started at Safe Passage, we were closer to the eighty-five percent reliance on federal government, but we have been actively working to decrease that reliance on the federal government and seeking, making sure that we engage our community, local community, to assist their neighbors. And one of the things that I think most people don't realize is that we don't charge anything for services. And one of the reasons we don't charge is because should a survivor or victim of a crime be penalized and charged to get services? I'm going to tell you, no. They shouldn't bear the burden of services to heal. That is not their responsibility. That is not their responsibility. So we don't charge for services. There may be some programs, like CAC programs, that will charge Medicaid, et cetera, but we recognize that we want to be able to provide therapy. We want to be able to provide timely forensic interviews to people who need it. And so we have the staff to do that. Our greatest asset are our employees. We have bachelor and master level employees who are licensed therapists and who are passionate about this work. They could go anywhere else and do something different, but they choose to stay within this community and help people in our community.
Any questions for Adrian?
Just say thank you for what you're doing. Amazing job.
Thank you.
Adrian, a quick question. So served eight hundred and thirty-eight, right?
Yes.
What do you think the actual number is of the individuals? Now, you've served eight hundred and thirty-eight men, women, and children.
Yes.
Because men are a strong percentage of who you serve.
Yes.
How many people actually never had the courage to call for help in York County? How many would you estimate?
I would estimate, so I was looking at the Bureau of Justice, their statistics, and for South Carolina, they say about forty-two percent. I'd venture that it's probably higher than that, that the majority do not seek services. I think we've seen an increase over the last two years because we actually have billboards in York County for domestic violence and sexual assault during different times of the year. And we saw a spike in requests for services for our sexual assault program. I would probably average maybe sixty percent do not seek assistance.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. We appreciate the good work that y'all do.
Thank you.
We now have Dennis Geter, Treasurer of the Library Board.
Hello, everybody. We're going to start off with a little presentation here on the library features and functions.
And I'll just introduce myself for some new members. I'm Julie Ward, the Director of the Library. We also have Tim Steele, our Chairman of the Board, and Pam Myler, who is our new Finance Manager. She's been here six months and this is her first budget run. Very quickly, you've got statistics in front of you. You know, I like to show you the numbers that we generate thanks to your investment in us. And I just want to point out really briefly a couple of things. You can see the numbers of things borrowed, but I wonder if you know, other physical items that you can borrow from the library are reminiscence kits, which are kits to use with caregivers for Alzheimer's patients. And there are things like music, talk about music and photographs to engage them. Other physical items that you can check out at the library are Kinder Kits. We use that with our outreach services. They're for teachers and our daycare teachers and our school teachers to use with their students, through kits of books and music and lesson plans. There's just some different things that you can borrow at the library. On the next page, when you look at how many visits we've had, some things that you may not know that people come to the library to visit for are that we have a mobile printing service, so you can send a print job from anywhere that you are to any library that you would like to go pick up that print job and swing in and get it. We now have a fax service at every library, which has always been a high, a high question by people coming in, do we do fax services? It doesn't cost the library anything. We also have park passes and that is free to us. They're South Carolina park passes to the national parks. So those are some things that you come visit the library for that you might not expect. And one of our biggest, most popular feature, of course, is programs. That's one of our big investments in our budget is putting on programs. Today, just to give you a snapshot of how many programs we had across the system, we had one baby program, one toddler program, two preschool story programs, one pause-to-read program, a Lego challenge, a teen chess club. We had two book clubs and a York Stitchers Club. And then our outreach department went to eight different locations. So that's a lot of programming in just one day. I will turn to a quick snapshot survey that we did during National Library Week and the theme was what draws you to the library. And the top three reasons out of, let's see how many people, we had two hundred and eighty-two responses throughout the week. The top three reasons that people want to come to the library are unique programs and events, books, and lifelong learning. So we're providing services with money that you give to us to spend out to our community. I will maybe hang on to this, I'm not dropping it every time. And then just, this is an overview of the key investments that are made with the budget approvals that you give to us. Of course, books and materials, we've got streaming services, we have online tools for homeschoolers and educators and college planning tools. Of course, we have literacy programs for all ages. We have and try to maintain safe and clean facilities for the community, and I think we do an excellent job of that. And then we have professional staff who provide great customer service and specialized readers' advisory services. Those are all critical services that we provide to the community. And finally, I just want to promote our very important, our VIP library events that we provide to the community. Patchwork storytelling tales, I hope you'll come this year and it's happening again at the White Home in Rock Hill, fantastic event. Our Genealogy and Local History Expo, that gets visitors from as far as Georgia and people from all over South Carolina. Our Summer Reading Challenge that is starting now, where you can register to sign up, and then we kick it off officially on June 2nd. And Library Con, which is, I think, our fifth year in running, it's now a family event where you can wear costumes, there are author talks, there's lots of activities at the library, runs all day. That's this Saturday if you're looking for a fun event to attend at the library. So thank you very much for investing in us and I hope that if you have any questions after we go over this, you do ask us, I would say, come on up. I would just say that the one change to our budget this year, our focus is on infrastructure. So without further ado, sir?
So you have in front of you ten pages of detail and I think you got a two-page little, what I call the cheat sheet here. And I'll just, I'll just start with what I consider the highlights from what you might be making decisions on. Number one, you know we are a taxing authority and we have four-point-six mills under our authority. And we are basically utilizing those full six-point, four-point-six mills again this year. So again, the increase in that mill was about five-point-five percent in general. And so our budget revenue increase.
Dennis, I'm sorry, is this a separate attachment or is this just the one piece? You said ten pages, so I was confused. But that's it, two. Oh, I thought you said ten. Okay. Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt.
Anyway, so basically what we're saying is, in terms of the overall county, putting us in the budget.
One page is all we have? Is that what we're supposed to have?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I've got two because I got it in a different format. So that being said, number one, from a top-level point, we're not asking for any increase in mill rate. We are going to get an increase in budget dollars because the mill is worth more this year. So, but everything stays the same from a top-level situation. Number two, if you go to page six, first we want to talk about money, then we want to talk Number two, if you go to page six, first, we want to talk about money, then we want to talk about personnel. They don't have this ten-pager?
No.
Okay, already? Excuse me, I thought this was in your packet. Okay, then I will just give you two things. Mill rate stays the same. Dollars increase, but we put that in our budget, number two. Employee count stays the same. Staff is not asking for an increase in staff this year. So, we will maintain the same staff, and just for your information, that consists of sixty-eight full-time employees and forty-eight part-time employees, for a total of employment of a hundred-and-sixteen people. And at this moment, there are two vacancies which we anticipate filling rather quickly. So, they will be filled. We will stay with the same employee count that we had last year. That being said, again, if you're looking at that little sheet of paper, you'll notice where the, our revenue now, in round numbers, we're at a ten-million-dollar outfit. You would be, the county would be contributing nine-point-two million of that, which is the top line, county appropriations. If you look at the expenditures, obviously, as with everything, we're heavily employee-expensed. You'll see it's about sixty percent or more of our percent of our total revenue. And we are asking for salary increases of two-point-three-four percent, which, because of the spread on where they are on the scale, we are cognizant of the three-point-five merit increase that the county has as a general year-after-year goal. Increase, so we increased a little bit there, but not the full three-point-five. Employee benefits are going up a little bit more than that, and that was basic, again, because of in-premium health insurance. But you'll notice that with revenue going up five-point-five, our core expenses are not going up five-point-five. So, that's allowing us to spend a little bit more in other budget items. So, obviously, the business of library is books. So, we're gonna be increasing our book expenditures by nine percent. And the other big thing that deals with the books is electronic reference. Again, that's staying about the same. So, those are two of the bigger expenses pieces underneath the employee costs. Again, you can look through there and see our other expenses. Might comment that when we talk about building maintenance, we are now have an agreement with the county in terms of our expense level. As you know, you guys own the buildings, and we utilize them, but we're paying, the agreement now is, and Josh can verify this, fifty thousand dollars and under expenses are gonna be covered by the library and the library personnel in general. Anything over fifty thousand would go to the county for them to take care of. So, the only question I have is, I don't know if that hand, and again, this is just a sidebar, because of the Baxter Library, you know, we have the bottom floor, a little squash of the top, and we can talk later about taking over the economic developments up there, and the sheriff is up there, in what I call "prime library space," by the way. So, that being said, I don't know how we divide the expenses for that budget, for that building, but that's another story for another day. But that's, in general, why that number's going up. And of course, that's a maintenance expense, it's our best guess, but we know we have some facility needs and we have some parking lot needs. So, that's why we're increasing that number a little bit more substantially in terms of percentage. You also notice that the, another increase, which we talked about, again, one of the big things with the library is programming. And our program increases, projected an eighteen percent increase, and again, putting our dollars where the public wants us to spend them. So, we talked about books, services, and programs, which are our key output of our library, along with everything else. So, that being said, in summary, asking for nine-point-two million, which is four-point-six mills times the mill rate, we're gonna spend about ten million dollars, and the budget is balanced. And just a sidebar, as you know, we are the most observed committee and board of probably anybody in the county with people recording us and every move we make and everything we say. So, we're under extreme scrutiny. And the public, I will say, had no objection with this budget. So, I don't think you'll get any flak from any of our citizens about the size of the budget. So, that's my conclusion. I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
Dennis?
Hey, Dennis.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I got a couple of calls over the last couple of weeks about supporting, I think the caller said, facility studies, some kind of.
Needs assessment.
Needs assessment, okay, yeah. Where are we at on that?
We have, as you know, there was a, like this year, a whole turnover on the board. So, the new Strategic Planning Committee has been constituted. It's held, the chair is Carol Herring, and they're starting to hold strategic planning meetings, which is basically, quite frankly, facility recommendations and planning. So, that's taking place. And if they recommend a study, I'm sure that we're gonna entertain it. But I'll just say that the roar of the public, if you want to say that, now that we have books somewhat under control. That we're now talking about, the new roar is facilities. And of course, we've all talked about how we need more library facilities. That's the, that's the goal here, to get more facilities. But I think, in my opinion, and this is just a sidebar, my opinion, the first thing we have is we got the low-hanging fruit, which I just mentioned before. We got Baxter Building, which we could use for more library space. Two other tenants, as you know, Economic Development and the Sheriff. And possibly, if we could move those out, that would be cheap, the cheapest space the library could utilize because we got the whole down floor as it is. But number two, we are definitely, if you'd look at any of the statistics, and we don't need a fifty-thousand-dollar or thirty-thousand-dollar study to tell us this, we have, we're under libraries in terms of population and library buildings. So, we already know that. So, I think the channeling of the funds right now, or the expenditures, should be spent on a, you'll say a facilities, but obviously, we can do analysis. Where is our population? Where is our population growth? And this is in rocket science. We gotta put a library there. I think everybody, without even having any discussion, will say we need two locations right now, and we can go from there. But the advent, the, what the public wants, what you're hearing, is more library locations. And their thought process is, okay, let's do a, have a higher consultant to tell us where those library locations should be. So, I think if the Strategic Planning Committee comes up with that conclusion, which I think they'll have something in three to six months, then that would be something we would entertain.
In your presentation, I noticed you said the raises were two-and-a-half. What did you say the raises were?
Two-point-three-four percent.
Two-point-three-four, okay.
Yeah.
If I may interject on that because I'm from the girl.
This is Pam, our Finance Manager.
I have all the numbers in my head. So, we're actually following county's merit increase, which we understand will either be three or three-point-five percent. But we had some senior positions vacate this past year with entry-level positions coming in. So, the overall increase in our salaries, we're still doing the three-point-five merit increase if the county does three-point-five. But our overall cost only increased by two-point-three-four percent because some of the salary, some of the employees are coming in at a lower grade.
Because my question was gonna be, us creating, well, they're getting three-and-a-half, and we're, so you just cleared that up for us?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just like Dennis and Tim, you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate you all. Quick question. That section in the Baxter Library, the upper part, if that was to open up, do you all have envisions of what you would do up there?
In general, what we would do, and this, again, this is just gonna be me off the cuff just to give you a quick answer, but I think it's about ninety percent correct. Okay, what we have down on the first floor, you know, first floor is prime space, but we have our meeting room downstairs. So, the first thing that we would do is take over that executive, or the Economic Development area, and move all, move up meeting rooms, put the meeting rooms on the second floor, and expand our, especially our children's area down there, and utilize first floor valuable space. Move up meetings space, which we need, but that could easily be on the second floor. And then, we could be talking about possibly shifting some of the staff offices that are on the first floor up to the second floor. In other words, first floor is premium space for our patrons to come in and utilize. We don't want to have meeting rooms taking up that space. We don't want to have office space taking up that space. But the third thing would be is, and I've talked to Julie about this, and nothing is formalized, but possibly, if we had more space there, we could take some of the resources out of Rock Hill and move departments that are back-office departments into Fort Mill location. And then, the flip side of that, that would give us more space in Rock Hill. So, it's a win-win situation.
Yeah.
Just because it's cheap space, we don't have to brick and mortar it. We just have to, you know, redevelop it.
Yeah, I was just curious, because of going up a level, I think that makes sense.
But, you know, again, the two spots we're kind of thinking about, though there's a lot of discussion about this, is another location in Fort Mill over in what I call the Elizabeth area, or the area around the Fort Mill Parkway, where you've got tens of thousands of houses going in practically over there. The old Sprat property and all that stuff. And then, a location in Clover. Because right now, you've got a very small Lake Wylie location, and then, you've got the Clover, which is a small library too, but way out in Clover. So, if you put something closer to like forty-nine, where the, something a little bit more where the population density is right there, it would be a better match. And those are probably, and you guys know better than I do, two of the most, highest-growing areas right now in the county. So, we try to match library locations where the population is growing or anticipated.
Thank you, Dennis.
But again, the study might prove more things, and we talk about how do we handle rural York County, I mean, York with Tommy out there. And there, we have kind of said, maybe the best way to utilize that is the mobile truck, which we have, the Bookmobile. And for maybe two-hundred thousand or two-fifty, if we need it, we could do two Bookmobiles. And that might offer, and we made some visits out to the Towns, McConnells, and those people, but hey, maybe we can park the Bookmobile there for a half a day or three-quarters of a day and let the residents there just have a little closer access. So, brick and mortar is definitely one thing. In a more rural area, we've got a little less population, Bookmobiles make a lot more sense. Plus, then, we can have also book. We could put some lockers out there. We could deliver books out there. We could give service, better service to the less-populated York County, York City, Tommy's District. And then, again, where we got the density and need the density. And here's the thing, as you guys know with the traffic, you can say, well, I'm, you know, I'm, well, I'm an example. Sometimes, to get out of Fort Mill, just to come down here, it takes me twenty minutes to get out, you know, out of the Fort Mill proper area. It's just with traffic being so bad. So, we gotta look at the same thing with our residents. So, we can say, well, the libraries might be considered a little close together, but you've gotta also consider travel time. So, if you're out in Elizabeth right now and you're trying to go over to Baxter, well, you might as well forget it during rush hour because it's an hour. So, but that being said, you've got the same trouble, Andy, as you know, at Clover. I mean, there, nothing backs up more than that Buster Boy Bridge. But after that, again, so you gotta look at density, and we gotta look at traffic situation. But, and that's something that we are gonna talk about with the county, is hey, if we start talking about libraries at fifteen million a pop, fifteen million dollars a pop, and I'm just drawing that number out of the sky, are we talking about two of them? We're talking about some significant dollars. And what's the procedure gonna be for capital? How are we gonna fund that? What's the documentation that's gonna be required? And just all those procedures. So, I think that's gonna be coming up on the table this year for sure. So, we'll all make the decisions together.
I appreciate you mentioning Clover because I was, I've heard a lot about Fort Mill and their library and what they need over there, but the Clover, York, and Lake Wylie area is also, you know, a growing area. Definitely need something. So, I'm glad that you brought that up.
Now, that's just me talking. I'm not on the Strategic Planning Committee, so, but I guess, you know, common sense is common sense.
Well, that's where the, like you said, when it gets into the big millions of dollars, you know, a little bit of money for a assessment study goes a long ways to making sure that we get the right thing and don't find out after we build it that maybe we didn't include the right things.
Well, let's make sure that we have the right, I think you guys probably, with your planning, know more about population than any consultant we're gonna hire from who knows where.
Yeah, but we don't do library programming and those things, but.
Well, just think "population," and we'll do the programming.
One of the, I got two questions. One is the telephone and internet is a substantial increase.
Good observation.
I was just curious why it's so much greater.
Okay, I'll, specifically because we were getting a grant to cover the internet, and we anticipate that that grant is not gonna be available anymore. So, right now, we're saying we're gonna, we're gonna put in the funding to cover it, so there's no surprise if we don't get the grant. If we do, it'll just go be a little surplus.
Excellent. And I was, I was glad to see that the books have increased, and y'all are looking to buy more books and whatnot. And I guess the moratorium, for lack of a better word, that's been taken care of, we're now back in the book-buying business?
Well, you know, again, that got, I will politely say, got a little overblown. And that being said, there's two things we're looking at right now. In fact, I'm on the, I'm the Chair of the Collection Committee. So, this is, even though it's a kind of little off-budget topic, it's very important. There's two significant factors. Last year, the state put in the Proviso twenty-seven-point-one about sexual content for minors. And we put in, just said, okay, right now, we're gonna do a moratorium. A lot of people were talking about, "We don't understand it," and all that kind of stuff. Well, that's fine. You don't understand the law, you still gotta follow it. And just saying, "I don't understand it," is no excuse. So, what that moratorium allowed us to do is just to make sure that we didn't have sexual-content books going in the minor section. That's only involved minors, by the way, as you know. So, what we've done, Julie, the selectors, we've just become more cognizant of looking at books and looking at reviews and paying more attention when they talk about sexual contents and sexual activity. You know, it's not our job to buy a bunch of sexual books for minors. So, the roar that, of course, banning books, which is the, you know, the buzzwords, the "Throw raw meat out," very, very, was very, not even, hardly intense since that we have good selectors to begin with. So, there might have been three or four books per month that weren't bought. And I'll just give you a sidebar. There's probably, you know, you can, and we have one board member who'll say, "Well, you're banning four books because we're not buying them." Well, we probably don't buy a thousand books every year, I mean, every month. The, you know, the amount of books that are available are just overwhelming and the lists that you get from all the distributors. So, our selectors are, you know, doing the best they can do, and they have their criteria about the content, about what the literary value of the book is, how does it fit into our collection? And there's a myriad of decisions. So, just saying, because one of the decisions is we don't want to put sexually-content books in the minor section of the library, that's just another selection, but not the selection. And so, I think we've got that pretty well ironed out. The State Education Board has really taken the step on this, and we just have a policy now. If the state education says this book shouldn't be in the school libraries, we're saying, okay, it shouldn't be available for minors in our library. Now, remember, we're not saying anything about adults here. Adults, you know, so if a book is not appropriate for minors, it may be located in the. it may be located in the adult section, but they're not, it's not any, in terms of segregating anything. It's just that content is adult oriented, so it goes in the adult section.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Dennis.
You know, a subject near and dear to my heart. Any other questions?
Same here.
One, one quick question on the note of the book situation. Are board members looking at books or is that a different committee?
Actually, the board is not looking at books at all, just the book selectors. The only time we're going to really get involved in books is if a resident appeals a book, then it would go to the selectors and they would make a ruling on this, the resident's complaint. And if need be, then it would come to the board for review. But, so we're not, we're not involved in any selection process at all right now. But we are in the process of updating the collection policy. And as you probably heard, the legislature put another proviso in dealing with libraries and books, though we haven't seen it yet. But that's, should be coming through here momentarily, so we plan to incorporate that obviously if it's a new law.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, now we have Tamara Edrington, Executive Director of Catawba Community Health.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us today. I want to bring your attention to my budget administrator, Michelle Mitchum, who is here with us today. It has been a long evening, so I won't be before you long, but I do want to bring your attention to a few slides that will support our budget request this fiscal year. Firstly, thank you for your support on last fiscal year, and you will see in our presentation where that money was spent and how increased funding could help offset some of the additional costs and create new programming for us here at Catawba Mental Health. I will just bring your attention to our mission statement. That is to support the recovery of those struggling with a mental illness. That is very short and simple and to the point, but recovery means a lot of things to a lot of different people. And most people who are non-clinically minded, it means just providing them with therapy, whether that is individual, group or family in addition to medication. We provide all of those, but it's beyond that. When you're struggling with a mental illness, we look at the whole bio cycle, social aspect of that, your housing. If you're struggling with a mental illness, that is not at the top of your priority list. Entitlement, work. If you cannot go to work every day, then you cannot pay your mortgage or your rent. Getting those entitlement benefits such as SNAP or SSI, SSDI, we can help you in that support as well. If you're indigent and cannot afford your treatment, getting that hospital stay that you so desperately need, whereas most patients will steer clear of the hospital because they cannot afford it. We do not turn patients away for inability to pay. Um, primary care, that is supported as well. Your mental and your physical go hand in hand. A number of our patients do not go to their primary care doctors because of the shame and the stigma associated with mental illnesses. We have incorporated primary care in our behavioral health facility in York County, only York County. We work hand in hand with North Central Family Medicine. Our patients are able to see their therapist, their psychiatrist, then walk down the hall for an EKG if they need one. They're able to get blood draws, they're able to get their medications if they need that. All of that falls into the recovery of a mental illness. Next, if I can bring your attention to the number of patients that we're actively serving, and this is as of April thirtieth, in order to meet the deadline before the board, we are serving two thousand six hundred and twenty-three active patients. That is not contact, those are active individual patients. One thousand seven hundred sixty-five of those, excuse me, are from York County alone. So nearly, a little bit over half are just York County patients that we are serving. Access. Right now, between July first and April thirtieth, July first of last year, we received three thousand two hundred and thirty-five calls requesting mental health services. Two thousand six hundred and twenty-three of those patient calls were appropriate and met our eligibility criteria. What I mean by that word, these were not calls that said we need resources, we'll provide those, but those were not logged as active calls. Those were not callers who said, I need substance abuse services. We directed those to the appropriate place. These are two thousand six hundred and twenty-three patient calls who needed our services. Some of the services that only we can provide as being an agency in York County. A hundred, one thousand three hundred and forty-nine of those patients were screened as requiring care and were seen within four days. That is routine care. Our access is seven days, we saw them within four. We are a specialty. I don't know how many of you have ever needed to get to a specialist, it has not been four days if you needed a referral. Seven hundred and eighty-seven of those patients were screened as needing urgent care, meaning they were discharging from the hospital or coming directly out of jail. They were seen within two business days. Four hundred and eighty-seven patients were screened and required emergent care. They were seen within one day. They called, they were told to walk right in. They were seen that day. I will bring your attention to... I'm so sorry, all the slides. Slide thirteen, and I think you all do have the presentation in front of you. In order not to keep you too long, I'll just highlight some of the major, um, slides. Hospital crisis bed days. We are on target, have a budget of three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for hospital bed days, inpatient hospital bed days. Primarily that money goes to Piedmont Medical Center. This is to treat indigent patients throughout all of our Catawba region, Chester, Lancaster and York. But again, our primary patients are York County patients. They are sent to the hospital, they do not pay anything, they are involuntarily committed. Hospital bed days are six hundred dollars per day and we can pay up to eight days. The average stay is about five days per patient. We have already spent two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We're on target to spend three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Again, these are indigent uninsured patients who cannot cover their own costs, so that cost defaults to us. Mobile crisis, that is a service that is provided three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. Currently, if you can see the comparison of the metrics, last year for the full fiscal year, we had five hundred and fifty-six calls. As of April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, we had five hundred and sixteen. We're on a trend to increase the number of calls that we had last year. A hundred and ninety-nine of those calls were York County alone. Ninety-six of those calls required mobile responses, meaning at three AM or five fifteen AM, we got out of our beds and we went to that location with law enforcement. We were able to treat those patients on scene, divert seventy to eighty percent of those from the hospital or the jail and had them follow up with our treatment the next business day. Um, we have nine staff, including myself, who are on mobile crisis. If the calls come in at six AM, but we need to be at work at eight thirty AM, that is what will happen. We will follow those calls all the way through. This also requires me calling a judge, Miller or Woodruff, to wake them up at three thirty in the morning saying, I need your assistance with signing the orders to get this person committed if necessary. Our average response time is thirty-nine minutes. Some of our staff come out of Charlotte, out of Concord, out of Lancaster. I'm the majority here in York County, but thirty-nine minutes from call to scene, that is where we are. Housing. We have thirty-three housing units. They're not Catawba units, but we work with local landlords, resources here, thirty-three of those. All of our housing patients are York County housing patients. Sixty-eight people are housing sixty-eight people, thirty-seven are patients, the remainder are family members. So if there is one individual who needs housing because they have a mental illness, their entire family is supported through our housing program. We're projected to spend three hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, approximately on rental assistance, and this does include a housing, a utility allowance. Those are the needs during fiscal year twenty-five. Bring your attention to some of our specialty programming there. We've discussed last year long-acting injectables. We do cover that cost for the detention center. If there are inmates in the detention center who are needing these medications who may not be on the formulary list for the detention center, or it's too pricey for the detention center, they do contact me to pay for those invoices. We have already allotted our fifteen thousand dollars for York County Detention Center on medication this year, and we still have a month and a half to go. So we are out of funding for them, so funding from the county can help offset those costs. Speaking of detention center, you all do know that the detention center funds, partially funds, one of our programs. We have a clinician in the detention center, and that is a sixty-five thousand dollar contract. However, the detention center only pays us for the time that the person is there. So they do not allow for holidays. We were closed on last Friday for a state holiday. We did not get the revenue for that sixty-five thousand dollar contract. If our clinician is out sick a day and cannot report, we are not getting the revenue for that. It also doesn't cover the fringe of the position. So we are paying, we're receiving about fifty thousand dollars of that sixty-five thousand dollar contract. With fringe, that position looks close to eighty thousand dollars. So there's a difference there that we are not receiving. You can see here that we have seen a one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five duplicated contacts, meaning not people, but contacts with inmates, or eleven hundred individual inmates from July one of last year to April thirtieth of this year. There were ten inmates referred to Catawba upon release. There were several other inmates referred to Bryan State Civil and Forensic Hospital there. Again, you see, we have one staff, thirty-two hours a day, Monday through Friday, and these are some of the primary diagnoses that we see in the detention center. This is a new program that we're very proud of. It's coming soon. In partnership with Pathways Community Center, we'll be offering a mobile service to the residents of York County and York County only. This will be effective in July, and this is our tentative schedule. We'll be parked at Pathways with our mobile RV that will be able to provide all mobile mental health services, assessments, injection, nursing services, psychiatric services and therapy. This will be at a cost to the center because the majority of the patients that we will see will be uninsured. They will be homeless patients, so they will not be paying for their services. The court system with York County. These are the current services that we're providing to York County, free of service to the patients of York County and to the community of York County. Sixteen scheduled designated exams, and the follow-up slides will tell you what a designated exam is if you're not aware. Eighty-five supplemental hearings, five bond motions. We have a hundred and eight court ordered patients. We have four not guilty by reason of insanity patients that we're required to follow forever. Mental health court, two mental health court ordered patients and eleven homeless court patients that we provide services to. The court services require a lot of our time. As you all know, we are a revenue generating agency. We are partially funded by the state, not half-funded, just partially funded. Everything else we're designated with generating revenue ourselves. Our staff are clinically trained. We generate the revenue through billing insurances, Medicaid, Medicare or any other source. When I remove my staff offline to provide a quote-unquote free service to the county, that means we are not generating revenue. The designated exams, anyone in the county of York, and we're the only people that can do this, can come to me and say, I have concerns about my son. He's not acting right, he's delusional, things are going on, I have concerns. We can file what's called a judicial petition for a civil commitment. Requires lots of talking, lots of paperwork. This, again, is not revenue generating. If the individual has a mental illness that necessitates treatment, if the treatment should be inpatient or outpatient, voluntary or involuntary, two examiners are required to conduct this exam, one clinician, one psychiatrist. The rate for a psychiatrist is three hundred dollars an hour. Again, we've moved them offline, they're not generating revenue, so that's a loss of three hundred dollars an hour for us. Once we have the exam this Thursday, we follow up in court on Tuesday, another offline service. And we follow this individual through. Lots of people come, not everybody is qualified, but we scheduled sixteen designated exams so far. Supplemental hearings, eighty-five of those, we've scheduled this far. Again, we've removed my staff offline to come to the court to work with our judges to determine, basically, you're not compliant, Mr. Ardet, with your treatment. We filed an affidavit of non-compliance to the courts. The judges want to know why. How do we get them in compliance? What do we need to do? Let's follow their treatment. That means we're in the court system, not in our clinics providing the service. Youth who are in treatment, the judges require frequent progress updates, so we're called back to court frequently. Where are they? What are they doing? What's the next course of treatment? Bond motions. Again, these are for individuals who determine if they're charged with stalking or harassment. They don't qualify for necessary mental health treatment because they're not necessarily mentally ill. These are harassment, stalking charges that may or may not require treatment. The judges want to know what needs to happen before we can set a bond. Will they be okay? If we set a bond, what is your assessment? We've done five of those thus far, they continue to come. Next, I'll bring your attention to our lost revenue and our write-offs. The date, three hundred and sixty approximately thousand dollars. These are for patients who do not pay for their services. We've tried all course of action, letters, debt set, we haven't gotten anything there. These are not active patients. We keep these on file for ten years. After ten years, we can start trying to reap some of those benefits, and if we can't, they're deemed write-off every month. As you can see, we have different write-off reports. So to date, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we will not ever collect for services that we have provided. Right now, we currently have four hundred and forty-one uninsured patients just in York County. The majority of patients receive upwards of three services per month, four hundred and forty-one times three, lots of lost revenue. Last year, you all offered us a hundred thousand dollars. We're very appreciative of that. Did utilize that, and I want to share with you how we utilize that. We provided additional evidence-based treatment and trainings for our clinical staff that help us broaden what we provide to the citizens of York County. We've offset, as I mentioned, the cost of the detention center position. We're at a loss right now. Um, we do receive funding for that position, we're very grateful, not enough. Expansion of our court positions. We created a probate court liaison to handle all of these supplemental hearings, the bond motions and the designated exams. We did not have that before, so that funding went to that salary and to offset some of the lost revenue when we're not generating revenue. As I mentioned, the unbillable therapist and psychiatrist time. When we remove them from out of our office, they can't bill. They are here, they're not billing, that's a loss for us. Also wanted to mention that we did conduct a needs assessment and a stakeholders meeting with York County partners to determine what is it that you need from Catawba Mental Health, and the overarching theme was training, more trainings. You guys are the experts in mental health, is what we were told. We want you to train our staff, whether it is Department of Juvenile Justice, DSS, Police Department, Sheriff's Office, Moss Justice. We will do that and we do that currently, but again, we remove our staff, we're not generating revenue, but we're providing a service. Thank you all. That concludes my presentation. I will entertain questions now if you have any.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I mean, we are not infonifying the value of what this is bringing back and the savings to our community if these people weren't under treatment and the ramifications of them being out back on the street. So what you're all doing is, is fantastic. So we're, you know, I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I'll, I'll just say between the last two presentations we've seen with Safe Passage and now with Catawba Community Mental Health, it pales in comparison to some of the other stuff that we've been asked to support and all the rigmarole that we're going through. This really hits home as to how we're able to have a positive impact. I'd much rather be fighting over spending dollars to go here than some of the other places we've been asked to put our resources, so thank you.
Critical, critical needs that we have, and I appreciate the presentation, Ms. Edrington. I, I especially like that y'all are now being directly involved with the court system and having a liaison there. I think that's, that's a critical move, and I'm glad to see y'all doing that.
Yeah, it kind of, it kind of makes you wonder what we should have lined up on here and made some of them sit and listen.
I just appreciate your time, and we certainly want to continue expanding our programming. Um, one thing that we really want to do, there are lots of agencies in York County, private sector, that provide mental health treatment, and they are all great, and we need a lot of them. But I do want to highlight, but we are the only facility that can provide services to the severely and persistently mentally ill. Those not guilty by reason of insanity will always come to us. Those that are civilly and forensically committed will always come to us. Those that need long-acting injectables will always come to us, nowhere else.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, it's on my agenda. I know it's Clemson.
Sorry, Ben.
Here we go. Ben Boils, you, you received the prize. You stayed the longest and waited the longest.
Come on, Ben.
Senior.
Can I already apologize to him? Because I didn't realize we were this late.
I don't think any of us realized we would be this late, but...
Last, but certainly, hopefully not least, as it relates to the topic tonight. No, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come speak. My name is Ben Boils. I am an agribusiness agent with Clemson Extension. Also have the honor of serving as our office's county coordinator as of this year. So I'm excited to take over that role and be here today to talk about something I'm very passionate about, which is serving York County residents. Extension has been around for quite a while. We've been working to improve the economy, the environment, and the well-being of York County residents through the delivery of unbiased, research-based information and education for over 110 years. We've been in this community for quite a while. Extension is a public service outreach arm of the university. I like to visualize it as a bridge between campus and the local community as we have an office in every county of the state of South Carolina. And our work is centered around these focus areas that you see here. Agriculture, natural resources, food and nutrition, agribusiness, micro team area. And I was so pleased to see a graduate of our new and beginning farmer program in the video that visited York County earlier tonight. That was really great, cool, cool story to see. And finally, while I'm here tonight, our 4H and youth development focus area. So there's, the word cooperative is in our name, and that is really reflected in how we receive our funding. Our program is supported by funding from a mix of sources, both federal, state, and local here at the county. So there's several pots involved in accomplishing our work. I wanted to showcase and highlight the Extension staff that serve York County. The top row here are individuals. We are based in York County. So we are at the office down the street on Congress Street. I do want to pay attention to the person in the middle there. Abigail Taylor just started on Monday. She's a brand-new horticulture agent for the county. I know our master gardeners are excited about that and looking forward to meeting her. The individuals on the bottom row, they serve York County, but they're not based in York County. We pull them in based upon their areas of expertise and focus areas. So I just want to put a face, I'm one of representing many tonight. So right, let's get down to it. So our budget request, the main goal of this request for this fiscal year is to really, you know, support and expand our York County 4H program. That's the goal. And you'll see of our total amount requested, which is $58,736, over 95% of that, or $54,936, is going to support that particular program through supporting two positions. So you see, the first one, we're asking for $31,523 to help cover a portion of our established 4H agent, Kristen Cundy, who I'm sure you have met before. That has been recurring for several years, and we're really appreciative, appreciative of that. So we would love to see that continue. But new for this fiscal year, we're asking for $23,413.20 to cover a portion of a new 4H program assistant. And this amount represents a 50-50 cost share. So Clemson University would be paying 50% of this, and York County would be paying 50%. That is for a full-time physician, but we are definitely open to entertaining a part-time as the budget allows. I did want to make sure that was shared tonight. And then $3,800 for office operation support, office supplies, printing and copying as well. But again, the lion's share, I guess I should say tiger's share, is to support the 4H program. And normally, our great 4H agent, Kristen Cundy, would be here tonight. Unfortunately, she, well, fortunately, she is on vacation, a well-deserved vacation. So I'm pinching tonight. So I'm representing her tonight in the 4H program, and her great work makes my work tonight easy. So I just wanted to quick, provide some context for our ask tonight and kind of giving you an overview of 4H in this county. So 4H provides our youth with school enrichment programs, special interest workshops, clubs, projects, camps, and community events in the following areas. So agriculture and natural resources, which we commonly think about with 4H, right? But there's so much more. It includes science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, civic engagement. So those are the kind of the buckets that our 4H programming fills. And look at these stats at the bottom of this slide, and that's why I said my job is easy tonight. York County 4H is growing rapidly. I'm sure you've seen some 4Hers here before council through the, through the, through the, through the months and years. But 3,800 York County youth participated in 4H activities during the past year. 560 participated and were actively engaged in a 4H club. And this is the stat that just blows me away. 20% of all 4Hers in South Carolina reside in this county. I mean, take a moment to really reflect on that. So I tip my hat to Kristen and all of her volunteers for doing great work. She's busy, she needs some help. She needs another, another set of, set of hands to be able to continue this momentum, and that's where the program assistant comes in. And that's why we're requesting those funds for this, for this fiscal year. So the program assistant will help keep that momentum going, you know, ensuring the consistent level of programming that's there and growing it, helping us to reach other areas of the county, expand our school offering, in-school offerings, expand our after-school offerings. The sky could be the limit with, with the extra set of hands to really expand the capacity to grow partnerships and to create an environment that will allow Kristen to really focus and spends a lot of time developing new and innovative programs. She has already developed some that have become models for the state. And I can only imagine, her given some time and space to just invest in that area, what could come out of that. So freeing up her time to do that. And I'll, I'll close with this. The 4H motto, as you might know, is to make the best better. I think York County 4H is the best in the state, and with this funding support, we can make it even better. So I really want to, again, thank you for your support over these hundred-some-odd years and look forward to the future. I do have my information there as county coordinator, and again, Kristen, who would have loved to have been here tonight, sends her regards and her thanks, and her information is there as well. So with that, I'll thank you again, and it would entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. I don't know if the rest of my colleagues realize it, but, well, your boss, me and him, Tom Dawkins.
Oh, yes.
We were young back when this all started. Rusty Thompson.
Not 110 years ago.
Rusty Thompson in the 1970s. And y'all would laugh, because I was worried about when he did his presentation if he would have brought a lot of those pictures that are housed in that building down there. But in the 1970s, Rusty Thompson showed up at my daddy's farm, me about 10 years old, to want me to go to the state fair and show cows. The first one in eons from York County. And it went from me starting and showing cows to today, the 4H and the FFA group that they have that show cows. Plus, not to mention, over the years, the state championships, Florida and all that, my youngins actually. And for us to have the program, I mean, I got to see it grow. But I do know that they do need the help. But it, it's something to see how much.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions? I know it's late, I appreciate your...
Thank you, Ben, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for waiting, it's so late.
My pleasure.
Get an education on...
With that, I bid you good night, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last item is the fiscal year '26 general budget discussion. I think this is a wrap-up from some of the questions that council asked at the last meeting.
Yes, and for the sake of time, yesterday I did send a budget follow-up report to y'all answering the questions from the last meeting's budget items. So you have that in your inbox. The one item that I didn't answer, I told you we'd answer today, our Parks and Recreation Director, Catherine Jones, is here to help answer. And so we've provided you, you know, hot off the press, a three-pager to talk about potential fee ideas. And Catherine's here with Tom and I, ready to discuss that and give you a little more information about what that could look like, if you, if you also wish. I do appreciate Catherine sticking around tonight and making herself available to have this conversation. That's the one thing that we really couldn't fit into this email from yesterday. Happy to talk about any of the other answers from yesterday, but those items too will be back in front of you Monday, and I can answer the questions then too, if you have it, so.
It's been a long night. What does council feel like? We have a, we have a brief executive session.
When she come all the way out here, we can at least talk to her for a minute.
All right.
Yes, Catherine, come on up.
I have, we have been presented with these documents.
So Catherine, can you give just, just a brief introduction to what they have in front of them? Your thought process and some options for them to consider as they move through the budget process?
Absolutely. So what I've provided you guys is some different scenarios and also data on our current fee structure and what revenue we do generate based off the fees that are in place now. And if there is consideration to reducing in-county fees to $0 and it be free access, I've outlined that in this memo for you of what that, those cost impacts and revenue impacts will be. I've also included in here a recommendation to consider even charging a minimal fee of maybe a dollar for county residents and increasing the out-of-county fee for Ebenezer Park, which you'll kind of see that. I've, I've got charts here. For the sake of time, I'm not going to obviously read this, but I've outlined that in the paragraph forms as well, what that amount comes a total to, and then what we could recoup if we did charge just a minimal fee of a dollar to our county residents and reduce our annual pass rates. I do want to note that when we're considering changing fees, we do lease the properties, Ebenezer Park and Allison Creek, from Duke Energy. So we do submit our fee structure to Duke Energy, kind of for their review and approval before we bring it to you. So if we are looking to change those, that's just something that we will want to pass back through to Duke. That's a pretty quick process. We send it to our liaison, they review it and bounce it back to us. As long as it's not super substantial changes, we've not had any issues there. But I did want to note that, and that is included in the memo. Some other things that were suggested that included in here too in a way to become revenue-neutral is to look at our camping fees. We offer premier camping experience at our parks and facilities. As you know, you've invested a lot of capital dollars in Allison Creek and Ebenezer Park to, to have those quality facilities. And so we are in a market where we can easily increase those camping fees to, again, get us back to that revenue-neutral space that, that we need to be. So I don't know if you've got any questions. I know this is getting to you kind of at the 11th hour. So happy to answer any questions right now, or Tom or Catherine.
Catherine, I'd just like to tell the council that, as a personal privilege, I want to thank Catherine and the county manager. We've all been working diligently to look at these options and test price and demand-supply sensitivity for what we consider to be unique services. And thank you for staying this evening, too. Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate you doing this. This, this is very helpful. Yeah, absolutely.
Glad it is, yeah. I mean, it, you know, indicates what the overall impact would be if you, if we do take it down to $0. Yeah, and then, and then if, if we do want to charge a minimal fee, what kind of revenue we might would get back to, to try to get back to revenue-neutral, because it would make an impact on what would need to be put back towards our budget to cover our expenses.
So I don't know about the rest of the council, but I would, would really like to see the camping fees go up, at least for the non-residents. I briefly mentioned with, with Mr. Couch that, that I would do, that, what my ideas were behind it. And this, and your report here kind of confirms what my thoughts were, is that if we just reduce the, the access fees, we're going to lose money. And I'm definitely not in favor of that. So I think that with the number of people we have coming in from out of, out of state and out of the county to visit our premier parks, that they should have a little skin in the game. So I would really like for you to look at that, if the rest of the council would, is in favor of that. One other thing that we, that I might look at, you know, the dollar fee. I don't know how that reacts with other people, but I wouldn't mind that in being a, maybe purchasing a sticker for your vehicle to get access to the parks. Because I really do enjoy having my tag hanging in the mirror and just driving straight through the gate.
Yeah.
And so if I have a sticker there, and I don't have to show them and prove to them that I actually live here, if I could just pick up a sticker from like, come down here to the government center and get a sticker, pay a couple of dollars for it, it just gets me in and out of the parks. You know, that would be something I would be.
Well, and then part of this too, if we reduce the, the day pass to like a dollar for in-county resident, I also recommend in reducing that annual pass fee too, you know, from what it was.
Fee, you know, if it needed to stay, but raise the...
Out of county.
Yes. I'm okay with, I'm okay with that, the rest of the council.
Yeah, and in, in what I provided you at this time, I didn't recommend that. If you look at the numbers, I mean, we have 34 non-resident annual pass holders that were purchased and 37 senior non-residents. So it wasn't a substantial amount that I felt like we needed to, we weren't going to recoup that much more revenue by increasing when we don't have that many people purchasing the pass. I feel like looking at the camping, really for resident and non-resident, because we have a lot to offer. Our fees are very similar to those that are just having the bare bones at RV sites. They've got gravel sites. I mean, we've got great, brand-new sites that we can offer. So I think you're going to capture a lot more revenue with minimal increase with camping. You're going to capture a lot more than if you were to, to look at the day-use annual non-resident pass.
I think it also offers an opportunity to address or relieve some of the concerns that you may have of funding equity issues in the future for recreation and what we've imposed from management. So I, I hope this is a very workable solution in that direction we ought to consider to sit, to sit on going forward.
One quick comment, a little off-topic, but tonight someone mentioned when Boat Shore gets backed up, apps, Waze, and others are going to drive people down Lake Wiley Drive, turning down by the BP and going down Lake Wiley Drive. I don't know what we can do about that. We talked previously about signage. But anyway, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but we probably need to be thinking about that, because that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I will say, you know, you guys approved a queuing software for us, and we also added the turnaround off of Boat Shore Road. So we are working with those solutions right now, and we're going to be open-minded and addressing if, if issues continue to arise on trying to provide some solutions. But we are hoping and anticipating that those two factors that we implemented are going to alleviate the traffic backing up and then also allowing people to get in as soon as a spot opens. So it's going to start that queuing, you know, just like you, you go and put your name in at a restaurant. So get people in as, as people leave and spaces come available.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? We good? Appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do have a motion for executive session for litigation update.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?